Okay, anything, any questions or comments on finance? Omari, anything on this item?
Maybe, I guess, is this a thirty second? I'm just curious about the things that are outdated. That would didn't necessitate this kind of third. Take it or maybe going to monitor later at the end.
I would say that it's not any one specific policy per se. Looking at the overall scope of the finance department, there's a number of procedures, processes that are a result of policies, internal policies, that haven't been documented in the past. And so aligning things, aligning processes and capturing that that match the policies. And then when you read the policy, is this, does this work for 2024? Does this work with our current operations and the current scope of what we're tasked to do as a township? It's really where, I think, Todd, I'll let you, you know, chime in on this, but I think that's really where this goes. Is to kind of set that up as almost like a playbook of here's what finance does and here's how we do it. And here's how we operate and to have someone come in and provide that professional oversight.
Yeah, it's not so much procedure, but just making sure everything aligns. And also everything is so fragmented that you're almost better off to dump it all out and just start over and have a fresh, you know, what we're doing now, capture that and then figure out how to enhance it if needed. But I, it's just like every year that something changes. So right now the CIP is totally different than it was the prior year, right? But there's no instructions on how to do such things. So if. Because when I came, there's still.
So I, reading, reading the, with the words that I'm hearing, I'll interpret using my words that we, we don't have fully documented processes, nor do we have kind of, I'll call it best in class or, you know, kind of. Yeah, the best in class type. Expertise and, and, and maybe guidance or, or thought, thoughts from where, where finance has done well and other means of how we kind of want to bring back here. Is that a, is that fair?
Right.
That we can just get everything documented and bring in some expertise that, you know, has seen this in other places work well?
Yeah, and I think the other, the other thing to consider here is that over the last few years, we have improved the processes considerably and upgraded technologies that are used along with those processes. And what does that mean for the old processes? And the policies that were impacted by those things? You know, I think it's kind of keeping pace and documenting what those changes are for the future to have, like I'm saying, like somewhat of a playbook of this is how we proceed. And this is how we capture and document all of the items that belong in the audit or this report that is done. A lot of times I think, you know, I'll, I'll speak for Todd on this one. I think when Todd came in, it's kind of like, hey, this report is due.
The first you had to figure out what the report was.
Right.
Where was that on the website somewhere? How to get registered in order to file the report? Where do you get the information to put on the report? Right? So now obviously you know that as a person, but if people leave and come and go and then some of these reports have ramifications. If you don't do a property as far as the Act 205 funding, if you don't file that report to DC, what is the 385 report property, then you can get checked by the auditor general. And you know, it also, if you do it understated, then you don't get as much funding. So there is potential for, for errors because there's no playbook, basically. My vision would be, here's a binder. The first part is everything that needs done and this is how you do it, right? Not down to the ultimate detail, you know? This is the website where it is and you need to file this report, that report inside the website with reports from payroll that are this report, not down to, you know, click here and click there. Like I don't envision having a sixty page manual to do one report. But like I was filing the one report and I was used to the, I had to write data, but there was another report that I didn't know about that I could generate to make it much easier, right? And so, so next year it'll be, and some of these reports obviously are in the annual. So the flow from year to year, it's not like you get proficient at it, so.
Right.
The other thing being.
No, thank you.
And just quickly, the other thing being payroll. It's a task for any organization, but having really three units that all are, it's really three separate payrolls. And in the past, that just, you know, that wasn't the case until 2022. So that's a really brand new process and establishing all of the rules and the procedures that go into that, it's considerably different across all three. So I really want to capture that.
And I think that this was referenced in the organizational assessment.
Yes.
Too, as indeed, so everyone can recall, we just went over that, so. All right, anything else on finance? Not seeing or hearing anything. Thank you, Todd. And we'll move to parks capital improvement plan requests and we'll go to James.
Okay, so the detailed description is on, begins on page 117 with Autumn Wood Park. Before I get into the specific items, I want to just first talk a little bit about this capital improvement plan for parks. If you've followed along the last couple of years, this looks quite a bit different than what we've done in the past. And one of the things that I've been tracking in my time here has been the playground reports and playground safety inspections that we received from CRPR and kind of keeping track on the timeline of some of those items. In the 2023 safety inspection report, four playgrounds were highlighted as needing replacement in one to two years. The foremost being Tudak Park, the playground closest to the pavilion. So with that in mind, I kind of adjusted the priorities based on safety. In the past, we were doing a lot of developing, but a redeveloping of parks. Even with that and the grant funding, I think this is a rather high number for what we've seen over a five-year period for parks. That is front loaded by Cecil Urban Park and we'll get into the details. But the main focus here is to take care of the playgrounds that are coming up for replacement and kind of making sure that that is the focus and the focal point. And then if things move, come along along the way, maybe we'll work it in. But just knowing what's, what's coming down the pipe, that's the strategy that I use. So I'll begin with Autumn Wood Park Playground. This is one of the ones that was called out and needed replacement. The play structure is well worn and receives a high level of usage, given its location. The township currently has submitted a grant application to DCNR in support of what is known as a Kaboom Grant for the project. We may recall some discussion on this before. This project and the budget for it is established based on what I refer to as a best guess. So the Kaboom project itself involves a little bit of public input in terms of what the community would prefer to see in that, in that space. One of the things we talked about was what is the largest piece of equipment, play structure that would fit in the current play space and meet all of those safety requirements? Knowing that, that budget, budgeting for that item and installation would be 250,000. We would receive 50% in the grant match from Kaboom. There's a little bit of fluidity, given volunteer and how many volunteer, volunteers we bring out to engage in the project, but we would expect 50%. So that would really be a cost of 125,000. And for reference, if you go to Greenbrier Sabre Park, which was just upgraded with a new playground replacement this year, that park was 97,000. So 125 kind of being like roughly gauging for inflation. We know what basically we can get in that space. So that's kind of the number that I was kind of targeting is township contribution towards a playground. The next item.
I did have a question with Autumn Wood. Is it 2026 or 2027? Because the estimated start and completion date are in 2026, but the, the images have 2027.
That was one of the corrections.
Okay, that's a correction.
We moved it to 2026 and also added the grant funding of 125. Right now you see it at 250, all in the Parks and Recreation. So we split that.
Okay, just like the Cecil Urban that we'll get into next, essentially, the grant versus the.
Right.
On the pocket. Perfect, thank you.
But that was one of the corrections from after we said it before.
Yeah, so was I to answer all the questions on Autumn Wood? Okay, so Cecil Urban Park Phase Two, this one's been in the CIP for quite a while. We're finally getting to the point where I, I've been in contact with, when we first submitted the grant through DCNR, they recommended it to go on to LWCF, Land Water Conservation Fund. Still working things out with them. They're still reviewing our application. The cost of this project, the total cost, as you can see, is 1.1 million. We're expecting a 50% match on that. That's what we would anticipate. Nothing's changed on this project. That's the cost of the project and the scope as it's gone on over the years. It is inflated to this cost. So nothing's changed here, but this would be, anyone that asks about amphitheater or entertainment amenities or things like that, this project does not include that. This is mainly the intermediary phase where it would include a kiosk, a part, a small pavilion, a parking lot, entrance, dual loop walking path and some stormwater infrastructure and some tree plantings. But this is really like the foundational development of that part of the park. So any questions on this one?
And this one is grant dependent, so.
This one is grant dependent, right.
The grant is not awarded, so.
Right.
Okay, questions on this one or comments?
Don't think I need to flag this one. I think if it comes up and the grant is awarded, we'll have deeper conversations and maybe an à la carte menu as to dual loop trail versus ADA accessible parking, which I would think ADA would be more important than maybe the dual loop. If, would we, would we have, I guess this is a question, more conversation about maybe breaking this apart at a future date if the grant is awarded?
Well, it's a good question because we might have to decide in the proposal, in the application, what we're going to do with it.
Yeah, and, and that is, I mean, it's something we can look into, but that's typically when we apply, they're reviewing the grant based on what's in there and that's the plan.
Okay, that's enough. That, yeah, thank you.
Okay.
Just clarifying question.
So do we have an application in with LWCF? Okay.
Yeah, they actually just contacted me for a couple. They were looking for some extra information. So they're in the process of reviewing it, but I don't have a final decision from them on anything.
Okay, is that, yeah. But yeah, good question. Like with the Pine Grove Mills that we talked about last year, we got the grant, but it's very hard to change that after you get it. Okay, all right.
Fairbrook Park Playground Replacement, again, this is one of the ones that's called out. What's interesting about some of these playground replacements is if you look at them on the surface, you might say this is, this looks okay, like this is fine. What's the problem here? And what I was informed of is when the deck, the decking on the park or on the playground structure, the play structure begins to rust, eventually you can't, it's more cost effective to replace the entire structure than it is to replace the decking because of how many components it takes apart. And the longer it goes on, the harder it is to get replacement parts. So recommending this one to be replaced in 2027. Like I said, 125 is what I think it can be done for based on recent experiences. So that's what we have, that's what we have for Fairbrook Park. Haymarket Restroom Facilities, again, this is another one that's been on the CIP for quite a while. And the board may recall during discussions last year, the board requested that the item be moved to 2025 and that we increased the dollar amount. So it's on here is 2025 at $450,000 for restroom facilities.
I'm going to flag that one.
I'm going to say, you know, I will.
And one thing we talked about last year is that with the Little League field there, there's already a restroom and concession building. So we were interested in having a conversation with them about cooperating with them to use their facility in some way, whether leasing that out, you know, paying for maintenance, something like that. So, but there is already a facility there, so. I will flag that.
What happened after talking about it?
Well, this was pushed out, so we didn't have to, I mean, maybe the Parks and Rec Committee has talked about that a little bit, but if we want to engage in those conversations, we can bring that back.
Go ahead.
Homestead Park Playground Replacement, again, another one identified on the safety inspection report is needing replacement due to wear and tear. And again, I have a note here, but I do want to say this for anyone that views the meeting. These are safe structures, but they are aging out. So I just want to be clear that the safety inspection report isn't saying, hey, don't go on there. It's, they're safe, but again, 2028 and 125,000 for this one as well.
Is this the one that just got moved and then?
No, there's actually two playgrounds there. So that's the, the lower one is the new one, and then there's one up at the, kind of like the top of the hill above the pavilion.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah. Tudak Park Phase Three, 3A, this has been on here as well for a while. This is anticipated for 2027 at a cost of 355,000. I think, if I recall last year, I think we did, I think the board did bump it out maybe a year back. But yeah, that's what we expect for Tudak Park Phase 3A.
I think I just have some clarifying questions. That's all right.
Sure.
So it says, started here in January of this year.
Yeah.
Goes through 2027.
It would be, that's a mistake on my part. It would be a 2027 project.
That's okay. And I'm just going to say, I think that 2027 works for me because there are some other pickleball issues locally in other municipalities right now. So I think this will give us some time to hear what other municipalities are working through with pickleball. So I think it's fine.
Okay. Tudak Park Playground Replacement. So again, this is the oldest of all the playgrounds currently in service. This is also identified as being the, the one in most need of replacement. It's old and parts that are breaking need to be removed and there's no replacement parts for it. So I think it's probably, it's probably time to do it for 2025. And that, this got talked about in parks and it was recommended that due to the usage of this, of this playground, high level of usage it receives, put in a budget of 200,000 to allow for, you know, a little extra, I guess, you know, getting a play structure in the fall surface that we want with less restriction, so. And that.
I'm sorry, can I, I have a question. You talked about the fall surface and is that that rubberized sort of?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, so yeah, I can give a little bit of background on that too because there is a cost difference, obviously, between going with the engineered wood fiber versus the poured in place surface is what we refer to it as. There's a difference in cost. The engineered wood fiber tends to be replaced every, or added to. Gets added to on a yearly basis by CRPR, but I'd say they really have to revamp it probably on a cycle of every two to three years. The poured in place, I don't know, Dave, if you can give, I've heard 10 years. I've heard varying different things depending on, you know, how much maintenance is, you know, really required for it. So I don't know if you have a number that would be.
Nothing any better than that because we've only had our experience with it for two years.
Yeah.
At Homestead, right?
At, yeah, Homestead, and then we just did it in Greenbrier Sabre.
Oh, good, okay.
Yeah, so it's, it is like the fun new thing. We'll see. I think it's expected to get about 10 years life, life cycle, but.
But the ones where we have it, we haven't had to add to it, like the annual. Annual, has been no annual put more down?
Not, no, no.
Okay, so that's the experience we have, but we'll get more with the replacement and maybe, isn't it over at the airport?
Yeah, they have it as well.
That's been there for what now? That's probably been 10 years, right?
Yeah.
So how long has that been? It's been a while.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's certainly the new popular surface, for sure.
So it might be a use case to ask, to say, hey, I want to put in there and done anything to it.
Right, right.
For future.
It is ADA accessible, not that engineered wood fiber isn't, but I think it's preferred in terms of accessibility. So it's just an option that's on the table. And I think when we talked about Greenbrier Sabre Park and that replacement in parks, it was kind of like, what can we do? Like what is the structure that will be here that will suit the needs of this community? And then can, do we have enough left in the budget to do that surface? Or should we go with a different structure that's going to cost? So there's some alternatives there. Nothing is really set in stone until it gets designed, so. It's just an option. That's all of the parks items, so.
All right, any other notes for parks? Then we will move to information technology capital improvement plan requests. And we'll go to James if you want to lead this one.
Todd, are you?
I'll do it.
Okay.
Okay, great.
Can we have your other Todd here too, in case we get stuck? What page are we on?
The items are the descriptive pages begin on 66.
Okay, the first one is the audio speaker upgrade and replacement in the main meeting room. So this is a request to replace the speakers in the back. However, the bulk of the cost is labor because you have to run new CAT six back and a new switch and get it all installed and then they'll be able to control each speaker independently of everything else.
Flag this, please.
Okay. Do you want to ask your question now or not?
It's up to you.
Yeah, yeah.
It was more on the, this CAT six versus, I mean, wireless is a thing now versus, what are the, what are the, what were the other options that led you to, this is the solution, CAT six? I appreciate the individual speakers because I understand the issue that we've been having with volumes and such, but you know, were there other options explored?
They did not recommend any to us. This is the one they recommend very often, that was just running CAT six. Wireless is fine, but I prefer to run a hard line, in my personal opinion. It doesn't necessarily have to be CAT six, but that's the standard as of right now.
And the dollars, 22, 25?
19, I don't care.
22, I had 10% for.
Sure. Maybe investigate and see if there's some other options, especially with this guy and I don't know, whatever. Is this CAT six as well and like is it all the same? Okay. So that's probably a factor. All right, thank you. We need to flag.
No need to flag.
Just checking out the wiring.
I keep your fingers touching.
Okay, before dive, then we'll move on to servers. So we have currently three servers. We have two primary servers, a backup server. So the first one is to replace the backup server in 2025 because it will be at the end of its life cycle. But the plan is to, going forward is to remove server one and migrate to server three. So we'll only have one primary server. But our backup server is not capable of having enough to handle the backup for one single server. So the first thing would be to backup, replace the backup server. And going down in 2020, also in 2025 is the migration and upgrade. Server three, it needs some more hardware to run the server for everything. And then migrate server one into my server three. So some of that is, there's some hardware there, but the bulk of the cost is, is IT time to move it. By hidden.
Why do we still need physical servers?
This is 2025, four, five.
There is a gradual plan. Yeah, I was just saying, if you want me to.
I'll get your description, yeah. Thanks, Todd.
Sure, no, the, there is a gradual plan to eventually move to Azure. So we will move away from a physical server eventually. It's just going to be a process of getting there. One of the things that we discussed in our meeting was doing a hybrid process also. So again, we'll be pulling one server out. There will be only one physical server on here. If, and that kind of covers our base, you know, to keep continuity between, if, you know, something happens with Microsoft services, we, we are not going to be able to function here. So being able to do that hybrid environment to be able to function, if, you know, Microsoft services go down, we can't, we can still operate here with our physical server. It'll help reduce some of that load though with removing the, of the, one of the servers we have currently on site.
What's Microsoft's longest downtime ever?
Usually, I don't know what, what did your, what would you say mad on that on?
It matters what you're paying for.
I, I, it depends. I mean, it depends on what the service is. I mean, sometimes I've seen it for hours, depends, usually it's no longer than a couple of days, I'd say, at the most. I don't see that very often. That's very rare, but it's just hours.
I, well, so then maybe then we're looking at other cloud providers like AWS or OCI. Because we're talking about a hundred thousand dollars in backup servers, maybe it was 30, 20, 20. Where like storage on those things are like, you know, a thousand dollars a year because we're just talking storage. Well. I'd like to flag this.
Which one?
The grouping, because it is a group of dollars that we're talking about here. And so, yeah, just the strategy around it to, I'm not sure, it seems a little high for where we are right now.
Just I wanted to do plus one on that. I was going to flag all three of these as a group also because I'd be curious a little bit more about the hybrid and maybe some remote DR, what was looked at, et cetera, for some offsite and maybe some pricing there.
Yeah, that is actually, the backup is actually going to be part of the, there, the DR is already, already in place. So that would still be, when we back up, we replace that server, it's still, that DR is still going to be there in place for the backup of offsite.
Thank you.
Well, we grouped them all together anyway for. Okay, so on down to. So this is a computer's laptop replacement. They went through an inventory of basically all the computers, and they replace them on a, what, five years, seven years? Five-year lifecycle. The bulk of them is higher in 2025, because some of the computers are still running, were, are not able to run Windows eleven, Windows ten is, is ending next year, or the support's ending. So that's why it starts at fourteen, twelve, and then it drops down to replacement.
I'd like to flag this item.
This is a copier mailroom replacement. It is a lease facility, lease copy now, copier now, so whether we buy one or release another one, it's, it's basically a replacement, because it's at the end of, it's at five years old.
Does it work?
It does work.
Is it broken and such that we absolutely need one? Or this is, is this like whole?
Preventative maintenance, or it's replacement, yeah. It's not broken currently, no.
So are we going to use it until it breaks, or are we just going to replace it before it breaks? Is that, what's like the plan?
I think this was actually, in modest status, is actually in the budget for 2024 to replace this.
That was the engineering one.
Oh, that was engineering, sorry, excuse me. But, yeah, these typically, we, in the past, we were leasing them, and then we moved to a program of purchasing them. So the lease being up, it's five years old, ready for a replacement if you consider a replacement program, but it's also an opportunity to possibly purchase instead of lease.
Just take a look. I'm assuming we're printing less pages over time, and therefore a lease is probably better? Because if you say, oh, we're a lease, and we're only printing five thousand pages a year, it's X number of dollars type of thing, and it's probably less than that. But it's, it's a rounding error from a total budget perspective.
Right.
And it's 2026, so we have a better idea than to, you know, if we wanted to say, let's, let's track it, you know, for a year, we'd have a good idea.
Yeah.
I guess I don't necessarily need to use a copier at my office, but I kind of feel like the concept of the copier is kind of like going the way of the overhead transparency projector, like, who uses it for copies?
We also use it a lot for scanning. It's also the fax machine.
Oh, yes.
Fax.
Fax machine also our cake.
Government needs to have everything that somebody wants to.
Yeah, exactly.
I don't know if we ever send a fax.
Faxes for business or faxes for a free vacation?
No, they're generally, yeah, yeah.
I'm sorry.
I'm going to move on. Sorry, my bad. Okay. And then also, going on, we had the firewalls for 2027, for this building to replace them. There's two of them currently, and they'll be at the end of their lifecycle.
I, I'd almost like to flag this, but, or maybe this one is contingent upon the discussion with the servers and everything. I would imagine this is related to the servers.
No, this one's more related to just, it's going to receive its life. Cycle. There's going to be no more firmware updates for certain firewalls that eventually will reach the end of their life, so we need to kind of get those replaced prior to that end of life cycle. And just because of features and the constant threats that we see on the landscape all the time, there's always new features like SIM might be added in as kind of a hybrid firewall, so just kind of preparing for that.
Thank you. I just wanted to make sure it wasn't related to the servers, which again, we had flagged, but this is separate. All right, thank you.
And this one, the second and the last one, is IT infrastructure for Building Six. Of course, it was built in 2019 and opened in 2021. So this is just a replacement in 2026 of all the switches and network equipment to make it work. The last one is UPS power supplies for the server room. There's two UPSs in the bottom. We looked at them today. They're at least ten years old. Couldn't find a date on them, but they're, they still have State College Borough tags on them. And so they haven't been in this building for many years, so it's just a replacement of those. They're still working fine, but at some point they're going to be replaced. There's a total of four of them, and this is two of the oldest ones. And that's this for IT.
All right. Well, thank you. Okay, we will move to fire capital improvement plan requests, and we'll go back to James.
Yes, so beginning on page forty-six is the detailed description. The overall plan is on page thirty-nine, which is where I'm going to work off of for this. This, those keeping track, this has been on, in the CIP for quite a few years. Nothing, nothing major has changed here. We have line items for the construction, design and engineering, and land acquisition. That would be slated for 2028, and is when we, when we had that listed in the program, and try to answer any questions that you may have, but there's, you got, received the presentation last night from Mr. Sean Kaufman, and.
So we have land acquisition and design engineering in 2028, and construction, all in 2028, okay.
Yeah.
That's impossible.
Correct.
Let's get serious on this, seriously like. If we really, if somebody really wants it, let's put a real plan together. We're, yeah.
Yeah.
Do we really want it?
Yeah, from my perspective, I think the 2028 for the design, et cetera, to then figure out land acquisition and everything else seems reasonable based on last night's conversation. It'll give time, a couple of years for this to evolve and larger discussions. But I'm fine with the 2028 timeline, then anticipating that the other two items, such as land acquisition, and then actually building these things are going to move further out past 2028.
Yeah. That's, I would think this is probably just a ballpark when they put it in here. Did you want to come?
Okay, no, it just seems to me that wouldn't land acquisition be your first thing, before you even design anything?
This is just out of order. There's another thing after this that's design and engineering and land acquisition, so.
Yeah, they're all three listed together. On.
The other one.
On page thirty-nine, right, on page thirty-nine. So you can see land acquisition is one item, five hundred thousand, design and engineering is seven hundred, and then construction is three million, six hundred and seventy-five thousand. So, right, I would think we could put land acquisition. My suggestion would be put land acquisition and design and engineering in one year. Maybe that's 2028, twenty-seven, twenty-eight, you know, and then construction the following year, so that would be my thought, but whoever wants to go next?
I, I would just start with land acquisition and leave it at that, and then, and push it out as far as we can. That's just me.
So have, so you're suggesting land acquisition in which year?
What are we going out to? Twenty twenty-nine? Twenty twenty-nine.
Okay. Who wants to go next?
Yeah, twenty twenty-nine. Actually, that makes sense, because I think maybe in a previous year, we basically put all three of those out as far as we could, but we couldn't necessarily put the construction out there like a twenty twenty-nine, twenty twenty-thirty, because it was only up until twenty twenty-seven, twenty twenty-eight, when we were doing the last CIPs.
That's likely how everything ended up in the same year, because we bumped it out to the last year. In previous iterations of the CIP, we would have a little section at the very end for things not included in the CIP. So things that you could see were coming, but they were maybe ten years out, so we, you know, you're not going to really know a budget, but you need to know that those items are coming. So once this kind of moved up, it was just at the tail end of the CIP, and so that's why everything's in. But if we're looking at, you know, really kind of moving forward with this, then we could look at those, you know, breaking those up into two different years. So you were thinking?
Twenty twenty-nine, is it?
Yeah.
Okay, yeah, I'm supporting Patty.
And for me, to be informed then by the business plan and everything else associated, as we discussed last night, so it can go either way, but pushing it out for now.
I'm almost there. And where, where I'm not quite there is that this would be proverbially kicking the can down the road, as opposed to, let's pick up the can, examine the can, open the can, like, what do we, what are we, are we going to cook what's in the can? Like, we've got to get a plan together. And same question I asked Chief Kaufman yesterday about like, you know, what have you investigated, you know, kind of investigated, put together? And he said, well, that's what we're going to do. Okay, by when? So I think there should be, or the chief were here to kind of, kind of talk with us on, when are we going to get a plan, but to like arbitrarily push it out to twenty-nine, I guess I'm okay with it, but I would like to pull something in till like, I don't know, twenty-six or twen, even like twenty-five. Put fifty K down for getting a plan together, like.
Well, so last night, yes, exactly. So last night, he said that the update of the Western Ferguson Township Plan, or the study would be done this summer, and then the strategic plan he was looking to have done this fall.
But the study has nothing to do with how the deal would come together.
Sorry, I thought you were asking about the timeline for the studies.
No, I'm asking for the timeline just broadly for everything, for like getting this station built. There is no plan. There's just a study about should we do the thing. I'm, I'm talking about getting like action. And it's going to take a li, like, probably a little bit of dollars upfront, twenty-five or twenty-six or twenty-seven, to like bring a consultant on to start that planning with COG, with some other entities, with perhaps a private developer, bring them all together to, to start the deal going. That's, that's where my brain is, like, just shifting everything out till later isn't going to get anything done.
So you want to put?
Maybe, maybe I'd add a line item for planning, which is for design, plan the plan. Maybe a hundred thousand dollars in twenty-six. Design maybe is twenty-eight or twenty-nine, and then there's some future stuff, which is your land acquisition and construction. That wouldn't be in the plan, but the, the station itself, thinking through how we're going to build the station with, who's going to build the station? How does Ferguson contribute? How does COG contribute? How does Oriers Mark contribute? Port Matilda, how do, you know, how does everybody, how do we get this deal done? I think we're going to need to put some dollars upfront to get the deal done.
If I may, and what I'm hearing you say too, is really creating that forcing function, and identifying, look, we're going to allocate some time and money to this. I look at these as worst-case scenarios, because we don't know what COG's investment is, what patent's investment is, you know.
We'll build the station. Yeah, we build it.
Right, but then where, where are the benefits for building the station that are maybe perceived differently, et cetera? I don't know those.
I'd like to challenge that assumption. I, yeah, we could build it.
We could.
But we should put some money into figuring out, how are there other resources to build it? Is it just Ferguson putting up four mil, four and a half million dollars? I don't think it should be. I think it should be some other entities coming together to pull the deal together, such that it's Ferguson maybe doing two, and then some other things have happened that have come to the table. So that's, that's where my brain is going on, like, how we do this, and we should spend some money upfront to, to kind of work through a plan.
Okay, so I think I've jotted down the suggestions and ideas, and so we're flagging it, and then when we come back to it, we'll go over those thoughts. Okay?
Sounds good. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Good discussion.
Who flagged it, though? Was it you?
Yes.
Let's call transparent.
Put my name on it.
Just that's the last item?
Was that, okay.
That's it? Yep.
Oh, last item, last item.
That was the last item.
All right, okay, let me just catch up here. Okay, so we will back up then to where we started with our flags. I think maybe maybe easiest, because it looks like my notes are going along with what I see here in front of us, so. Okay. I will, I can move us through this, and then we'll probably, whoever flagged it can, you know, yeah, just say, well, you know what their thought was, and if we're, then we'll just kind of do a, you know, a group, do we support this change? And at the end of, yeah, go ahead.
I think, pardon me if I'm wrong, maybe we did this for the budget. Did we take, like, did we take a motion and then get consensus? Or do you want to just generally get consensus?
I think if we get, I think, I think if we get consensus as we go through the list, and then at the end, we take a motion to ask staff to incorporate all the changes.
Yeah. We can do that. That works. Yeah. If there is anything where you might want to mark or consensus, then I would recommend that we take a, take a vote, just if there's any chance that something like, want to move forward with an item and get something nailed down, I, I would recommend that, but.
For a particular item, if it's, if we're unsure where to go. And there may be, because we're not authorizing this for public hearing tonight, so there may be items that we just need more information on, so, and that's, and that's totally fine. But the end of the night, the motion will be to, to incorporate the changes, so. But yeah, that's fine. I mean, if there, if you let me know if you think there's something that we need to take an individual motion on.
Okay, all right.
Is that fine with everybody? Okay, so we will start with okay, so we have the flagged items, and then responses. We'll start with carpet. And that was.
I think the carpet's fine.
I agree.
I agree.
And we can remove this, or postpone it till twenty twenty-eight or twenty twenty-nine, push it out for another review.
That's what I was thinking, push it out, because it's one of those things that's easy to reassess.
These are carpet squares, right, where you can pull one out and replace it with another?
You can, yes, now when they don't make this anymore, then you just pull it out and replace it with something near the closest you can get to it.
Make a new pattern?
Yeah, make new patterns. Just like, you know, Harrisburg and the Capitol. Just like, you know, Harrisburg and the Capitol, the floor's all tiled and interesting.
Uh, do you want to propose a year?
Twenty twenty eight.
Twenty twenty eight? Anybody?
So the other thought about this is that it was what, three grand or something like that?
Thirty seven.
And thousand.
Thirty seven.
Got it, okay. But it was everybody, it was like.
It was everything that was the twenty, two thousand and seven building.
And so from a staff perspective, something that's a couple, couple grand, you guys can go do, right? Or does there need to be some sort of?
If it's less than twenty five hundred, we do it in the operating budget.
Right.
So, yeah, right, so if there was an issue with something and they needed to replace it, if it was a smaller area.
Carpet, carpets are five bucks a piece or something, right?
Well, they're.
They're more expensive.
More than that, yeah.
You know, we could move it up to a closer year and we could even ask if maybe it gets, you know, well, we don't want to really break it up because then we're losing some efficiencies there, but, um, let's say twenty twenty seven? Okay, twenty twenty seven, carpet.
Twenty twenty seven?
Yep. All right, then we have, um, the building for steel doors. Oh, sorry, you're removing that, okay. That was your blocking.
Well, okay, so just on that note though, we, we, we just talked about, sorry, going back to this carpet thing. We just talked about if there's a section of carpet that's, that's kind of getting worn down, rip it up, put a new section down, so that's not gonna be five hundred bucks. It may be a few grand for like a section that is really truly wearing out, like the, the entrance, for instance. Dave's gonna need some budget to do an entrance that everybody walks in and out in every single day. Hallways, everybody's walking in a hallway every single day. So there's probably some sections that absolutely need to be done. So I think I, I'm kind of walking my brain back a little bit from we, because I was like, yeah, Lisa's right. Wait a minute, maybe it is ten thousand dollars per year across five years to allow Dave to go ahead and like replace, the team, I should say, to, to replace sections that are truly worn out and need to get redone. And he doesn't have to come asking for money later.
Right, so we don't have any hallways or the entrance on here, but, um, you know, maybe, and we don't need to know this right now, we're gonna push it out, maybe we even, so it's twenty twenty seven. If you want to, you know, come back, if you want to say twenty twenty six and then we ask that it be broken out, you know, if.
How would we like to do it? From a, from a global plan, um, let me just, we're not gonna spend time on it, but the very last sheet that you have in this packet. We did a inventory of all the components in all the buildings. And in a large spreadsheet, each building has its own tab. And then we roll that up into this master tab. And we just look at certain criteria for building components, give it a useful life. And then we try to project, you know, when we think different components might be replaced. And then as they get closer, we put them in the CIP that you see. And then we do the process that you're doing right now. Take a real deep dive into, you know, when do you want to do it?
Right.
So there's, you know, there's, um, it, it's a carpet that, um, you know, in twenty twenty seven, it'll be twenty years old. So it'll get difficult to start doing patches to it after a while. And you'll probably want to do, you know, rooms at a time, but maybe not all the rooms that are identified. So certainly if you want to say put an allowance in there and then, you know, as needed, we'll do a room at a time, that's fine. It's, it's a similar thought to like through all units, the HVAC units that are in offices. When we, when we renovated the building, there was discussion about, hey, are we gonna replace these all now? Or are we gonna wait till they fail? So we waited till they fail, but when they fail, uh, meaning the compressor needs replaced or the parts, it can't be serviced anymore. Then it's a two thousand or a twenty five hundred dollar, you know, expense. So we just have to realize that we'll need the funds then to replace them one at a time as they fail. But whatever approach the board wants to take is finding staff.
I like, I like the allowance approach so that you do have, if there's a room to be done, there's funds to do the room. Because it sounds like there's maybe, could be some that you do want to do and it's gonna, it's not worth it to just do half of it, do the whole thing. Then you'll have the funds to do it, so.
So do you want to leave it at twenty twenty seven and then when it comes back, we say you break it up? Or what's the, how do you want to do that?
I'm saying you should have twenty five, twenty six, twenty seven dollars, like three years versus one year.
So you're proposing ten or fifteen thousand each year?
Yes.
What does everybody think about that?
I'm okay.
I'm good with that, but I'll just say that to me is, you know, these are aesthetics and less about the purpose of the room and everything else. So I'm less inclined to, to spend a lot of money on these things.
You want to put it, push that out of here, do it that way, but push it out, so start in twenty six?
I was really just making a statement, yeah. I'm good with whatever, um, the majority feels, but these to me are just aesthetics.
Yeah. Thoughts?
And I would say I agree with the statement, and so if it does need to get done, don't do it. It, it's what, what I think we're doing here is we're putting kind of a, there's, there is a, from a capital perspective, there will be some capital, you know, but the group is saying do something each year as necessary. When we get to the budget, we could do something a little bit less and say, you know what? We gotta start pinching pennies and carpet's the first thing to go. So.
Okay, so you're saying fifteen each year?
From a CIP perspective, yes.
Any objections to that? And I just said fifteen, but it could be twelve. I guess that makes more sense, twelve thousand and each year, twenty five, twenty six, twenty seven.
Yeah, thirteen, okay. Would be thirty nine thousand.
Okay, so twenty five, twenty six, twenty seven each, thirteen thousand dollars. And, and we'll leave that at the, to the discretion of the Public Works Director as to what.
It's just numbers.
All right, there's consensus on that, it looks like.
And what was, I'm sorry, the twenty twenty five?
So it's thirteen thousand per year, twenty five, twenty six and twenty seven. Okay, very good. All right, and then we have the building for steel doors, that was removed. And then next we have the faucets, which I've got on page thirty four here, and that was Omari. Okay, so we'll keep handle faucets.
Yeah, what, what I can offer there, um, based on the discussion is that there's, there's just some faucets that we have in the basement that have the handle, you know, that you pick up and you let them flow. During COVID, there was a, a lot of effort to go touchless with faucets. But I'm not even going there with that concern. And we don't have a big issue with them being left on, right, and water just running. So, um, we could simply keep them until they're not functional. But then when they're not functional, we would replace them with the standard touchless faucets that we have. And we can do that through the operating budget. It's just that it'll, there'll be an expense there, a little bit of a bubble, right? When we do that because they're, they can, they can be expensive, that's all.
Because then you'd just be doing one at a time as they.
We'll just do one at a time as needed, if that's what we'd like to do, that's fine.
That, I, that makes sense to me. I like the idea of moving forward with the, um, the touchless too. Just as, as they break. Okay. Next is the floor settlement. Matt?
Yeah, the repair and the cost, since they're currently unknown. Uh, I don't know if seventy nine thousand is reasonable, unreasonable, if insurance might kick in, if everything else. So I think for this year, it's really just the investigation that we've already allocated the fifteen thousand for. And leaving it at that and removing this one.
I say triplet.
And yeah.
If we uncover something that's in need and we don't have it in the operating budget, then I imagine we would just come to the board for a budget amendment if, if necessary to do the work. If that's the approach we took.
That's kind of my thought, is that it'll have to come back to us anyway, once we get some hard numbers.
When is that assessment gonna be done? Do you have dates on that yet?
Uh, I believe the proposals are either recently signed or waiting to be signed, depending on the signature authority. So if we have those back, we need to get them to the consultants and, and get them started. So it's, it's in progress, but I don't have a date, a start date yet.
Do you think you could get a start date? Like, do you think August first?
Oh, yeah, yeah, once I,
drilling holes.
Once I pick up the signed proposals and give them a call, I'll get a start date.
Okay.
Yep.
So we, how many days from the date they start, what we have, like, uh, this is bad or this is, it's not so bad?
So they're, they, they wanted, they're recommending three months of just monitoring the cracks, right?
Okay.
And monitoring what we have, because we, we might have what we might think of as baseline, but they don't really have a baseline, so they want to establish a baseline, a measured baseline. We kind of have a subjective baseline right now. So three months of monitoring followed by the core samples.
Followed by?
Yeah, so the core samples are probably three months out, right?
Okay, I thought core samples were coming right away. Okay, all right, got it.
All right, what do we want to do with that?
I think we're gonna have to deal with it when it comes up in, you know, potentially a budget amendment and have some deeper conversations once we know more.
So you're talking budget. This is our capital plan. And you're saying we should capital plan zero, budget zero, and do it a minute later?
I do, yeah. I think we're gonna have some deeper conversations.
What are the benefits to doing that, sir?
It removes it from the, the CIP, one, one thing right off the bat, knowing that it might come back. Um, but also I think we're gonna have deeper conversations potentially around, well, what type of settlement is it? Is it truly necessary? And since seventy nine thousand dollars is a swag anyway, it's, it would just be us taking another swag on top of the swag at this point. So maybe a dollar, so at least it's still on the CIP. But I don't, I don't see seventy nine thousand since we, we really don't know much right now.
Mr. Mazger. There's a range of what this problem could be. And can you, is there a, if this is a nothing burger, settlement happens, like my house, got some mudding that you gotta do because there's a crack, you fix it, it's done. Is that what we're talking about, where like we're just fixing a couple of cracks, it's fine? As, at a minimum?
Yeah, so I talked to our geotechnical consultant and we talked about what are the ranges of possibilities here? I said, I'm preparing the CIP. Uh, you've probably done this before. So, um, so it, it's an unknown, but based on what we know now and what they've experienced in the past, I asked him, I said, I know we're probably somewhere between zero and a hundred thousand. Is seventy five thousand reasonable if we gotta do some grout filling and some slab jacking? And he said, yes, that sounds like a reasonable planning number, because that's all we can do right now is just plan.
So let's take what you just said. You said slab jacking and grouting, grouting.
Right.
Let's go a little bit further to the, it's not that bad. It's more than two thousand dollars, isn't it, for whatever we need to do?
So if it's not that bad, what we would do, we'd probably end up filling and sealing cracks, replacing some tiles. And then as doors, i- if they're done settling or if they're settling, we have a supplier that we call if the doors aren't fitting anymore. And typically they'll come in and do some grinding and, and some adjusting to make them fit. You know, it's not to the point where we have, you know, glass breaking or something like that, so. If in the nothing box, we'd probably handle it under maintenance.
And if I may, that's where I'm going with this, is that it changes the conversation when we say, I've got ten dollars versus I have eighty thousand dollars, right? It changed, the solution changes when the purse changes. So.
I see what, I see what you're saying, I do. But I think, you know, he, I think Dave understa- you know, I, I think if we give that, uh, position that, you know, if it's nothing, then yes, let's, you know, fill the cracks and replace the tiles needed. I was gonna say it seemed low if we're at the worst case scenario, because I want the biggest number in here, kind of like with, um, the Park Hills Drainage Way. We've got a great big number in there and hopefully we don't need to have that. But it helps me when I'm looking at everything, put everything in, in perspective as released everything else and the, and the budget when that comes in a few months, so. Either, but either way, I mean, it is, it is just a guess. I was gonna, I was gonna suggest moving it up, you know, to a hundred thousand, but, um, so that we have the worst case scenario planned for.
There, I mean, there are just different ends of the, the, the discussion here and I.
But I think we're all talking around the same thing, so.
It's really the approach.
If someone wants to make a proposal, we can, I think we've got information now, as much as we could have at this point.
There's two parts here. Part one is keep it in or not. And I think from a, is it nothing or is it something? One can, we, we're, this is about planning and it's not about the actuals. I think that we should plan for it being something. And, and that's kind of part one, but part two is, well, what's the number? So I, I, I think if we, we, maybe there's consensus around those two things, like keep it in and what's the number, and then we could probably.
I say keep it in for a hundred thousand dollars.
I'll go with keep it in for a hundred thousand dollars.
I can get behind that too. I'm just, just saying, I mean, this is, this is the discussion.
Right.
Case dismissed.
But it'll be funny when a contractor comes in and says, hey, for a hundred thousand dollars, I can do this. And you go, yeah, that's great. That's what I'm worried about.
I don't, I don't, I would hope that you would have enough confidence in what we do
I do.
that we wouldn't gauge the work to the amount that we thought we had in the capital. We'll, we'll bring in front of you what, what we really feel is needed to be done.
Dave, if I may, please, I retract those comments with all due respect. No, it is not, and it's not the township, you and your staff or anybody here. It's an outside entity that would be coming in for that assessment.
I understand.
I just want to, I apologize for that, yes.
So I, I'm hearing leave it in at a hundred thousand. And then we will pick this right back up in a few months, maybe with a little bit more information, hopefully, you know, because that will have the monitor, monitoring done, um, so maybe we'll have a better idea.
Yeah, we, we may have some better information by operating budget time.
Yeah, so, um, so we will, it, it really is in this case just a placeholder because it's coming back with more information, so. But again, really good discussion, I appreciate it. Okay, so we've got, leaving that in at a hundred thousand. Okay, next item up was the generator.
Man, my name's all over these.
Don't worry, there's just a lot of flags in general.
I think I said last night I like these, I'm not, I don't like these, but you know what I mean? It, the diesel's there, it doesn't run all the time. It works and we can replace parts as needed, they still make parts for it.
Yep.
And I know university and other places that run diesel generators as backups, potential backups. This, this to me is just a standard that probably doesn't need to be included.
Kaufman, you run that thing?
We run it, um, with load monthly. We run it without load, to be on a weekly without load. Now, there's some discussion I'm having right now as to what's the proper amount of time to run it with load. Something like a hospital is gonna run it every month with load. But other entities, our, our service provider tells us that they're only running it with load when they have their PM come once a year. So you run it, it exercises, uh, twenty minutes a week, just running itself without load. Yeah.
And then the, the fuel, doesn't it get stale after, are we okay with that?
It does.
With the way that we.
Every once in a while, um, we have had to pull the fuel and put new fuel in. In the very least, we have to put a anti-gelling additive in the fuel because you don't, I mean, you want to have enough fuel in the tank, but you don't want to have so much that it's gelling on you, so, yeah. You do have to take those precautions, yep.
Just to clarify my question too, a hundred KW here, that these types of generators too are made to be worked on, right? You can access the cylinder through ports and other things. It's not, you know, oh, we blew a cylinder, we have to replace the whole thing. It's, we can work on them.
It's serviceable and workable, it's like a big cat diesel engine. So, yeah, it's still serviceable, still workable and you can get to it. In fact, in our, our PM contracts, when it comes up, we're gonna have another discussion as to whether we want to have our own mechanics doing the, uh, the PM on it. Now, we have an automatic transfer switch and we still want that to be under service. But in the future, we may even do the, our own, uh, PM on it. At least in discussions with our new shop foreman, he's worked on these in the. PM on it, at least in discussions with our new shop foreman. He's worked on these in the past.
Oh, cool.
But, yeah, they do need annual preventative maintenance. Uh, they do need exercised.
Great, I'm good with uh, removing this or pushing it out to twenty twenty-nine?
Push it out to twenty twenty-nine and then reassess.
Is that a good reassessment date, sir?
It'll it'll last, yeah. Yeah, that's, it it's more um, as the diesel generator ages, at some point, we wanna have, hopefully, just before it fails, right? You wanna have a discussion about what do we wanna do with it in the future? Do we want it to be gas? Do we want it to stay diesel? Do we wanna start thinking, you know, battery backups with a solar system? So it's just future technology and, you know, best practices.
And maybe, because it mentions the study in here.
Right.
So maybe that's something that comes back separately too. If this is pushed back to twenty-nine, maybe the study goes in at.
Yeah, I'd like to do the study, you know, the year or as before we decide how we're gonna replace our generator.
Yeah, I think that would be great to see this study in the year before so that we can make a good decision on that. Okay, or whoever can. Alright, so we're pushing that out to twenty twenty-nine, so.
Did it study in twenty-eight?
Yeah.
When is this one?
And I wasn't suggesting you to put that study in now. I was even saying if you, next year CIP, but if you wanna put that in now, I can make that suggestion.
Okay.
What do you think?
Is, could we keep the plan in twenty-six and move the improvements to twenty-nine? Because there is ninety and twenty was planning, seventy was. I like this thought of like getting a plan together of, alright, here's when it, you know, makes sense then twenty-eight or twenty-nine or thirty, change the gas or change the LNG or whatever we wanna do, go solar, go electric, battery. But getting that plan earlier and then implementing it a few years later. What do you think?
Yeah, I'll propose doing the plan in well, if you think it'll last till twenty twenty-nine, right? So I'll propose doing the plan in twenty-eight, replacement or uh, yeah, replacement in some fashion in twenty-nine.
I have questions. How many times have we had to operate the generator at loading for how long?
The West Penn power reliability here has been typically with brownouts or small periods. So we haven't had to run it for, you know, extended days at a time. So we've had times where uh, if we have a a power outage that lasts more than eight seconds, approximately that's when it kicks on. Because less than that, it gives us time for certain components to drop out. And we have to be careful because it's not sized for everything, all AC running everywhere. So if the load's too big, it won't kick on. So certain components drop out and then it comes on. And then we go and manually bring some of the rooftop units back online. So I would say over the years, the reliability of West Penn's service has improved rather than dropped out. So it's it's really more you know, catastrophic events or think about when the power's out to your house and how long is it out, you know? You know, maybe those are, I don't think we've seen outages here that have been more than a day. So it hasn't, it hasn't need to run for an extended period of time. And it and really, um, it's also for emergency preparedness because we're running a police office and we're running public works through here. And who knows? You know, maybe it ends up being a shelter in place for even people. So so that's what that generator is, you know, intended for. And in the public works building, we have a a larger three hundred KW generator. It's a Cummins and it's supplied by natural gas. And um, it it'll run the whole building, yeah. This generator runs this building and then the the public works, police outbuilding number one. And it, I think we can run one of the other buildings off of it with a manual transfer of power. Yeah. Yeah, yes.
I I could see where the other generator could be vital, crippling, snowstorm. You're you're still gonna need to fuel the trucks and keep operations going to bench again.
Right. Yeah, this one here would keep the lights and the heat on in the police department as well as, you know, the rest of the building, but.
Silly question, just are they gang together or anything that if this one doesn't, the three hundred KW?
No, they're not. They're so they're they're completely separate circuits. Yeah, there's a a power supply and a meter for this building. There's a power supply and a meter for that building. Separate circuits. This one's diesel and this one up on the hill is gas.
So what I have is the study in twenty twenty-eight and some type of replacement twenty twenty-nine because it'll likely be needed then. Does that sound good? Okay, and then we will move to uh, the next item was mine. I flagged the lighting. There were four lighting. I, there are four lighting uh, projects and they were listed as could do, so I was just gonna suggest bundling them and moving them out to one year together, maybe twenty twenty-seven. Because that'll be our last year of carpeting uh, for those projects, so.
And then before that, we we can do a kind of a cost benefit analysis. And and we did that, the lamps that you see throughout the building years ago, they're all T twelve, so they're one inch diameter fluorescents. And we did a study in the energy savings to drop those to a T five and what that would cost, looked for rebates and and we changed them all out years ago. But it's kind of a similar process now with LEDs being a a standard.
Mm-hmm. So are you okay with that?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. So that would be bundling those four lighting projects, moving them out to twenty twenty-seven. I'm not seeing any issues with that, so I will mark that down. And we will move to the exterior metal uh, painting of buildings one, two, three, and four, and that was net.
Uh, and it looks like there's steel siding then?
Yeah, I went out and checked them all this morning with a magnet.
What type of steel? Let's get our metallurgist in here. No, just kidding. Um, okay. Then I would be alright, I guess. Okay, building two is aluminum.
Yeah, interestingly, that's a, that's an old salt shed. And so someone had the foresight to put aluminum siding on it, yeah.
And I'm trying to remember, was building two on for twenty twenty-five?
I don't have the years in in front.
Twenty-seven.
Twenty-seven.
Who's twenty-seven? Okay.
One is twenty-six.
Then I'm good with all these as they as they sit.
Okay.
Three is twenty-eight.
Now, that's important, especially if they're steel.
Okay, so that stays as is. Okay? And the next one was paving the laydown yard, and that was net.
Yeah, I was just curious again, got more about the necessity of this and if it's currently functioning or is this one of those things we're about to tip over to a different cost to have it been replaced, et cetera?
It's currently functioning. And because we're because we're gonna excavate it all and remove it, we don't necessarily have kind of that tip over point that we do with the roads. Because um, we're we're gonna need to increase the pavement structure to to handle the truckloads. So so we're gonna be removing all the pavement and replacing it. So we're we're kind of already at that tipping point. If you go out and look at it, it's it's busted up kind of like the big block cracking that we saw when we did the road tour.
Not the alligator cracking, but the block.
The block, yeah. It's 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 got a lot of block cracking in it right now. At some point, it's gonna need to be done before we, you know, beat it up too bad. So proactively, it it's a good idea to do it, but it it can survive and we can keep using it.
I'm okay with leaving this in um, for twenty twenty-five, but.
Okay, we'll leave it in. Okay. Alright, so we will move to the Bobcat replacement. Page thirty-four.
Must be somebody else named Heller.
Credit goes whoever raises their hands, but there are a lot of them where.
So so this is, this was the discussion about the Bobcats. The the engines in good condition, the frame is 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 good. Uh, where we really have an issue, like we often do with our public works equipment, is the body. Uh, I looked at this again this morning. I reviewed it with our shop foreman and our building superintendent. We've already um, replaced the floorboards in it because they were unsafe and rusted out. So so we've cut the floorboards out and replaced them. So this winter, we can do the bodywork and we have a gentleman who's pretty good with a sandblaster. So when they're not plowing this winter, if we want to, we can just refurbish the body, uh, probably get a couple of years out of it. I would recommend when we do that, at that point, we'll just paint it school bus yellow like the rest of our stuff. Right now, it looks orange and white like the Bobcat colors, right? But that'll be gone by the time we do all that. So um, so we can refurbish it and then probably just see it in the CIP in some future years. But there was talk about a skid steer, and I just wanted to clarify that we we have a skid steer and they're they're heavier duty than this. This is not a skid steer. This is, this is, has more of a body like a car, not, you know, a heavy duty steel structure that that you see on the skid steer.
I just wanna say thank you for investigating this and coming back with those solutions. I think that sounds right. And I don't wanna speak for the farmer at the table, but that's sounds to be more like what we'd be doing on a farm to say, okay, we're gonna make this thing last a little bit longer.
Yeah.
What's the new number? No.
You gotta put some energy into it.
For twenty twenty-seven or for this winter?
Just, you said you were gonna.
Oh, for this for this winter.
Effort.
Yeah, for this winter, we'll do it all under maintenance. So it won't be anything in the CIP. Well, there'll be a lot of labor, right? But we'll do that in-house. We'll we'll sandblast it, grind it. We'll use metal to replace and weld where we need metal. And then we'll take it over to Cata and spray it because that's where we spray things.
Do we pay Cata for that?
No, but we do store, but we do, but we do store salt for them.
Ah, there you go, okay, nice little.
He's got mine back, I'll swap yours. To neighbors.
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay, so we are so this moves out to twenty twenty-seven and that'll be a replacement then.
I can already hear it. Remember, this was the last thing we were doing to this thing and now we have to replace it.
Right.
Yeah, I can hear it in conversation, yes.
And that's what's so interesting about having narratives. It's, it can go in the narrative, you know, and we see that a lot, like this was refurbished in in this year. And so that all gets communicated year after year. Okay, so that we have.
Right, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
It's already in twenty twenty-seven.
Twenty-nine.
Well, I have two different things because in, because lower it has twenty twenty-five.
Oh, wow, okay, so the date is the top.
Yeah, twenty twenty-five was the intent. I'm not sure where it ended up.
Yeah, it's only.
It says up at the top, twenty twenty-seven. So that's an error on our part. So we'll move it.
Yeah, it's right in the spreadsheet. It's a twenty twenty-five in the spreadsheet.
I would, I want the date to go down far enough so that it'll match. Okay, we'll correct that.
And, okay, so that is getting moved. Okey-dokey. Okay, so we will go to the core drill pavement cores. And uh, that was Omari. I have page two oh-one on this.
So the core drill is certainly something we can continue renting. It's just over time, it'll it'll pay for itself, but it's not a necessity. It's not critical.
I flagged it to pull it in. If we are using this thing enough, I would spend five thousand today to get five thousand dollars a year in savings.
What year do I have it in?
Twenty-seven.
Okay, so you're ready to move it up?
Yeah.
Okay, and I'm fine with that.
Absolutely. This is a no br- I mean, are you using this at least three times a year?
Yeah, we usually when we rent it, it's for a week.
Yeah, sixteen hundred dollars per week. If it's three times per year, that's forty-eight hundred dollars and that would easily pay for itself in the first year.
I'm sorry, we'll rent it for a week, once a year. So I think it's a, I think it's a three-year.
Three-year payback, three and a half year.
Yeah.
Four year, but nonetheless, it's a good investment for, and we only do one time a year.
Well, it may be more than that, but I I know when we get it, we'll go out and use it and sample it for all the pavement projects that we have for the upcoming year. So, yeah.
I'll equate this to the laser level I bought. I thought I was only gonna use it once. Instead of renting it, it was gonna be cheap, you know, it's more expensive to buy it, but then I.
Well, you're probably right. I'm sure once we have it and we don't have to go rent it, well, we'll be making more use of it, but, yeah.
Yeah. Okay, so we're moving that to twenty twenty-five.
Okay.
Okay, next step.
The only reason I I didn't put it, and thank you, put it in twenty twenty-five is because it was a new thought and I try to make sure we plan these things out. But it will um, pay for itself and thank you.
Do we have extra dollars in twenty-four? Have you already done your core drilling this year?
We did in the spring, but we haven't done them for next year's projects, but, yeah. Twenty twenty-five is perfect. Thank you.
Alright, so I've got up next is the zero turn mower.
Yep, and that was, it was the one that was for twenty twenty-five that I had flagged. Um, and it really, and I appreciate the narrative that was provided. I was just considering a regular gas powered instead of a battery powered. I think it does need to be replaced, but just not a battery powered one.
And I, and really, that I, it could be a philosophical discussion as to what are the board's goals, right? With climate action and green vehicles. Um, I will say that as time goes on, we are seeing the price of the battery powered mowers come down. Um, they are more expensive than the gas powered right now. We've had success with them lasting for the entire shift for the day. It is true that if it's really thick and very high, the gas powered ones um, you know, might get through that a little a little better. But when I talk to the crew and the supervisors about using them, there, I I actually get a lot of positive feedback. If you had to, if you had a gas powered one and an electric powered one, which one would you take, right? And hands down, it was the electric one. Smoother, quieter, um, more comfortable. It it is, it is a little bit more um, expensive. We anyway, it it, I'll leave it at that and we'll, whatever the board's desire is.
Do you know how much off the top of your head? A conventional mower.
What's the number I have?
Versus thirty-one.
So right now, it's about double. Yeah.
Talk to me about fuel prices, please.
Well, that's one thing I can.
We can upfront cost, it's double, but let's talk about life of these things and what's the total cost.
Yeah, and I and I didn't run that through, but obviously you don't have the fuel usage and the fuel cost.
What's our fuel cost for, well, we we pay for lots of fuel, don't we?
Yeah, we do. I I can, I can give you big numbers on fuel, but I don't know what our usage is on on the mowers. But if we're putting, I don't know, five gallons a day in at two fifty a gallon, maybe twelve bucks a day, twelve fifty a day. Times five, fifty bucks a week for the mowing season.
Twenty-five weeks.
So.
And it said here too that this is the right time to sell the existing one, if we're gonna sell it.
Right, yeah.
I would wonder too, because we have two mowers, but one is this year, then the other one is next year. What if we went ahead and kind of diversified our fleet? This year with a, we'll say, a regular gas powered and next year with the EV?
Yeah, so so right now, we have two gas and one electric.
Okay, so.
And so our, the uh, the trend was to try to move those toward electric. But if if the desire is, you know, to keep the gas ones, then that that's, that's up to you.
I'm supportive of the electric.
Yep.
Well, do we look at both electrics then? I mean, are we buy one this year and take the other one off for next year? I mean, or buy one this year and take the other one off for next year?
Sorry?
Because there's a twenty-two-five electric and there's a twenty-two-six electric. So, if we get the twenty-two-five electric, does that mean that maybe we rethink the twenty-two-six electric?
And push that out, or?
I would say push it out.
Okay, do you want to make a suggestion?
Yeah, that, that second electric that was on twenty-two-six, push it out to twenty-two-seven, not too far, just a year.
Any problems with that? I'm fine with that.
I'm fine with that.
What is the benefit of doing so? It's just getting another year or two out of the gas one? Is that, Mr. Modric, is that okay? Like, could we take that gas one for four or five more years? Or what's the, when is?
I, I think moving it a year is palatable, I think if you move it out four years, you're really pushing the life of that type of mower for the service that it gets. So, I don't, I don't think I'd push it out that far.
Okay.
I mean, really, you know, when you're, when you're getting over four or five years and fifteen hundred hours on the, on the gas ones, that's really, if you're looking at a program, we only have three, right? But if you had a business and you were looking at, hey, what's the optimum time for me to be swapping out my mowers and my lawn care business? The gentleman who's a supervisor, who owned his lawn care business and was doing this, that was really kind of the industry rule of thumb there. You know, we tend to keep things longer and we take good care of them, so another year isn't an issue. But, but I wouldn't try to push it four or five.
So then I, I think then, back to the idea of the EV this year, leaving it in, or the battery one, buying it this year, and then just pushing that next one out to twenty-two-seven.
I'm good with that?
No objection.
Okay.
The team's good with it?
Yeah. Okay.
Okay, next up, we have the V-plow, Jeremy.
Uh, yes, I, I think I'd be good keeping that there, I was just looking back to the budget, we had replaced the V-plow on Public Works sixty-two, so we're, I, I don't believe we were talking about the same piece of equipment for the same use, so.
Because we had had an issue with a V-plow last year, and so.
It was on Public Works sixty-two, plowing residential streets. And it said, "Snow was blowing over plow onto cab and windshield at speeds greater than fifteen miles per hour." I don't know, can I go fifty through those bike paths? But it, it sounds like the V-plow for what this will be doing in the CIP is gonna work out.
Yes.
So.
So, we're good leaving that one?
Yeah, I'm good leaving it as is. Just had to go back and reference something.
No, it was a good question, because we all remembered, I, I remembered that discussion, so that was a good question. All right, up next, we have Public Works three, the single-axle vehicle. And that was Matt.
Um, I was, I appreciate the narrative, so I, I think I need maybe just a little bit of talking through what we have here and what we've learned since last night.
Sure, do you want me to go through the narrative?
Yeah, maybe it goes with the, the good, good, good.
Sure, so. So, this is a single-axle plow truck, which is in our plowing and response fleet. And what I'd like you to think about is Public Works as first responders in, in this regard, so we need a fleet that's reliable, and it's there when we're called out for emergencies, for debris down, for snow and ice control. Obviously, they're used all summer long too, but really, the critical condition for them is, as, as first responder type of equipment. And it's normally not the miles on the trucks, it's normally the rust and the condition of the chassis and just the components after seventeen years, and of course, the truck, it's also outfitted with all the electronics and the spreaders and everything that's needed for it to operate, so the condition assessment currently that our mechanic has in twenty-two-four is, is good, 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 right? So, that's good, so we're not asking for it to be replaced this year. But to continue to keep our, our fleet operational, it was originally proposed in twenty-two-five for next year, I suggested we move it out another year, at, at that, it would be seventeen years old when it's replaced. And when we think about the amount of money that we invest in our, in our fleet, if you flip to page four, this is really just a snapshot of the large equipment in the fleet, what an estimated useful life is, what an estimated cost is in twenty-two-three, I haven't even updated it, and then what a straight-line depreciation would look like. So, you can think about, you know, how much should I be thinking about setting aside over time so that I can, we can take care of the fleet, it doesn't mean that we're gonna put, spend four hundred thousand this year, but maybe next year, we're spending six hundred thousand, so, we just wanted to be cognizant of, of, you know, setting funds aside. So, that's, that's really what I wanted to mention in terms of the large trucks and keeping them maintained and reliable.
If I may, I am good, good, good with this remaining in twenty-two-six, and I am really good, good, good that you provided the equipment list here that helps paint perspectives for later CIP discussions.
Sure, absolutely.
That's, that's an important one.
I don't know if it's included here or not, but we do condition assessments every year for these also, so we don't, we don't base it, excuse me, equipment replacements strictly on years, but after a certain number of years, it is a good rule of thumb to think about, it's, it's getting close, yeah.
Can, can I just follow up too then, in, one of the things I remember about our new Public Works building is the ability to wash off some of the salt, et cetera. So, we can even, like, what has been typically an, you know, the standard life, maybe we're extending it with this.
And we do.
Perfect.
We do, yes.
Great.
I think I'm. I think my, my brain is, is trying, I'm trying to rationalize getting more out of our equipment, and I think the team's doing a really good job of doing so. As you've already said several times in the discussions, but and I get it that it's not the miles, it's kind of the body, it's the other, other stuff, I, it just, it. I guess we are first, but I, I guess if you look at other localities that perhaps don't have the dollars to do so, how are they able to extend their equipment, or are they going around with, with equipment that fails?
Probably the latter. I, I will say on a, on a positive note that, you know, our shop foreman, when he came to work for us, he was impressed with, you know, the, the condition of our equipment. And we do, we are able to service it and clean it and keep it in good shape and keep it as long as, excuse me, as long as we can. So, even in twenty-two-six, when we look at this, we're still gonna evaluate it. We may move it to twenty-two-seven. Twenty-two-six doesn't, doesn't mean it's a perfect year, if you said, Mr. Modric, I think that should be in twenty-two-seven, put it in twenty-two-seven, but you know, we're gonna continue to evaluate it, we're not buying it next year, so.
Yeah, thank you for that, because now I need to just say, you know, it's all fine. We'll see it next year, really might, you know, and then when we get to budget time, let's go out of the twenty-five and we'll start pinching things where we need to. Thank you, sir.
Yeah, absolutely.
So, we're leaving that as is, and we're good with that? Okay, next item was the urban forestry truck and you, this, the description in here with all the costs broken out, answered the question, so I'm fine with leaving that.
Okay.
There, thanks so much for breaking that out, that's just helpful for everyone to be able to see what we gain by doing things in-house versus contracting, and so that breakdown is just really helpful, so thanks so much.
Sure.
Uh, if anybody else needed that one flagged for anything, did anyone need a break before we, I guess not?
I can just do what, you know, Thompson did, and I can just excuse myself when I need to.
Right, okay. I was just thinking, we're moving on to roads right now, so if we wanted to take a quick break, this might be a good time, because we're at, still have stormwater. Let's do, yeah, let's go ahead and take five now, since we're in between sections, it's been.
Since Jeremy just did. Train center.
So, I got. It's kind of. Seen it all set, we'll call ourselves back to order here and we are moving to maintenance of roads. So this is, first, we had micro-surfacing. And I don't have a page number for that.
Do you want to just say first what your
Yeah, just restate what I said yesterday, like just more so on the, do we have, are there thirty years, thirty years we've been doing micro-surfacing, as you said. It's been around a long time.
Yep.
And so are there other technologies that other cities, other municipalities have used and, you know, these conferences, they say, oh, man, we did a really good job with this other thing ten years ago. And so now the price of that's coming down, maybe catching up to micro-surfacing or something like that, just curious about that.
In terms of a pavement preservation technique, I would say in this area at least, this is still a very effective and proven technology. There's something out there called thin lift asphalt. So typically when you put a wearing surface down, the minimum depth is an inch and a half. And usually before we put a wearing surface down, we scratch it or mill it. So there's maybe a half inch leveling and then an inch and a half that goes on top. So, so micro-surfacing is more of a three-eighths of an inch type of surface. And usually the limiting factor in putting a wearing course down is the aggregate because you don't want to, you don't want to crush the aggregate. And even with, well, with pavement preservation, you're really not getting any structure. You're trying to preserve the life of the road, right? You're, you're keeping the surface from oxidizing and you're, it's more of a seal coat. And, but there is something called, you know, thin lift paving where it is a smaller aggregate. And I, I don't know if it's experimental yet or if PennDOT has approved it on Bullet and thirty-five. But usually we want to make sure whatever product we're using is, is something that's approved by PennDOT. If we're going to use liquid fuel funds, if it's not liquid fuel funds and we're not writing up a project, it's not quite as important. But even last year when I was talking about some of our paving projects, I was saying, you know, consider a thin lift pavement. I was really thinking of that in lieu of an entire, to take the place of an overlay. But in, in terms of just pavement preservation, you might see on the west coast a, a technique where it's similar to micro-surfacing, but the aggregate and the polymers are white in color so that, so that you have more, you have less heat island effect. That's something that I've looked into, but isn't cost-effective here yet. But maybe on our road tour, you even may have heard me mention that's something that I'm still looking into more to see, to see what can be done. But the, you know, the other types of pavement preservation techniques, PennDOT is still using the chip seal, which is what you would call a tar chip. So that effectively does what micro-surfacing does. There's other, you know, slurry seals, fog seals, more of seal coating like we do on our bike paths, but the longevity isn't quite as long. So, I mean, I'll, I'll continue to look at technologies and advancements, but I think for now, this is, this is still the, probably the best bang for the buck for pavement preservation work. Yeah? Thank you.
Yeah? I'm good with leaving this in. In fact, just today I was having a conversation with my fourteen-year-old when we were on West Branch Road and he says, fresh oil and chips? Like, no, it sounds British. I was like, well, hey, let's talk about what that is. And I appreciate that we're doing the micro-surfacing here in Ferguson as opposed to that because I know how poorly that is received in Huntington. When they just did that, what, last year for example? So I think this is good.
So, and the amount associated with each year seems to be really similar to previous CIPs?
It is.
So that seems to just, you know, are you kind of setting that figure as a
Yes.
Kind of a target?
Yes. And if I, if I, again, as I've said in the past, if I, if I use Paver and ask it and it alone to recommend what we do for our roads, it will spend one and a half million dollars on micro-surfacing and just keep micro-surfacing. But we know that that needs to be balanced with, you know, some structural work that needs done on the roads too. So this has been what we found to be a very good balance to keep our roads at the level of service we want and still use the funding to take care of roads that we saw on our road tour that need to be repaid.
And then the first year comes out of liquid fuels and then the following years are out of the transportation improvement fund?
I'll look to Todd for that. We've, we've done it differently over the years depending on which fund balance is best to take it out of.
Okay, we don't need to go into it now, but just
Well, there is this, the way they were spending the liquid fuel money in twenty-three, it wasn't, the funding wasn't transferred properly. So there's not excess funds, but there's, the liquid fuel balance is higher than it should be.
Okay, that's what I recall from the budget.
So we're just going to spend it down and then it will be back on pace, so.
Very good, yep, that was my question.
And the other thing on this one, the funding for twenty-twenty-nine was corrected to five-eleven to match the expense. Not a big deal.
And when we spend liquid fuels money, we do need to write up a project and we do need to use Bullet and twenty, you know, approved PennDOT products.
Okay. All right. Okay, anything else on that? Okay, so that stays the same, that truck stays the same, okay. And then up next we had the roads from the road tour that we had flagged, it looks like Ross Street. Do we want to move that from the twenty-five to twenty-six?
I think, right, I flagged, but I know there was like back and forth on that. I'm good with leaving that in twenty-five.
Okay, and then I had flagged moving Rosewood, Pamela and Fairfield. Where were those? I know I had, because Pamela and Fairfield were on twenty-six, so I was suggesting moving Pamela, Rosewood. Oh, is Rosewood that little bit off of? Rosewood is that little bit off of Fairfield, I guess?
It's in twenty-six.
Okay, Rosewood is there, Pamela, was that Stafford? Was that that little connector road? Okay.
Stafford was the one I was hoping to leave in twenty-twenty-five?
Okay, that's fine, so we'll leave that and then unless anybody else wants to move that.
What's the reason for the moves?
Uh, we were just looking at getting things that are connected together in the same year. And then it looks, Dave, like you had broken out West Gatesburg Road here.
Yes, it's really about fifteen hundred feet of it that is the worst, out of the five thousand two hundred linear feet. And the unit cost for that would be higher because of the face repair that needs to be done. And then the balance would probably be less per unit price because I had given, used a unit price for the whole section and the whole segment. So I think it would be, I think it would be more expensive to do it in two separate mobilizations, maybe not cost-proportionably more expensive, right? So if we wanted to attack the worst of it first, you know, we could do that piece between Boundary Oaks Lane and, uh, what was called?
West Ridge, is that it?
Well, there were two oaks, it was Boundary Oaks and White Oak. But anyway, White, White Oaks had a point about fifteen hundred feet west of Boundary Oaks. I, I wrote it up that way, just a point fifteen hundred feet west.
Okay, so that one thirty, a hundred and thirty thousand is that worst section?
Right.
Of it, okay. So maybe we could, I would make the suggestion that we move that section up to twenty-twenty-six and leave the other in twenty-twenty-seven. And then next year that can get looked at again and maybe it's not any worse and we want to keep it all in twenty-seven or, or move forward with that. So that would be my suggestion is to move up that worst section of Gatesburg. There's no issue with that? Okay, so that would just be that one section?
That's fine.
Okay.
And that's appropriate to do?
Yeah, I mean, there's always an economy of scales to do all of it, but there's definitely a distinction between that first fifteen hundred feet and the remaining. And, and part of it is a draining, a drainage issue that we're going to have to resolve in that area, which, which we will take care of when we do that. So what I'm most happy about is, is moving that really bad piece up. Whether, whether or not we have to defer the better piece, if, if that makes the program work, you know, I'm, I'm fine with that.
And again, that's, we can look at that next year and say, you know, it might make sense to, to do it all because this is moving that bad section up to twenty-six.
Right.
Right, yeah, so you can kind of reassess, but
When we say bad, it's worse than any street that we've looked at or?
When I say bad, if we would have got out and stood there at that section, we would see, or maybe you remember when we drove through.
He wasn't on that portion of the, of the trip. Yeah, it was, it
There was a lot of block cracking, edge breaking. And then when you got out of it, it's not like there was a bright line in the sand, but I had one of our supervisors go out today and verify for me the length. And he called me back and said, it's one thousand four hundred and seventy-four feet. I said, okay. So I, because fifteen hundred was what I remembered and he measured it off probably with a DMI, a distance measuring device. But anyway, there, there is an area that's worse than the other, so.
When, and worse than all of the other streets on the town?
No.
So it's, it's worse than the ones that are slated, as bad as the ones, other ones slated for twenty-six?
Let me say it in a different way. That, there's a, there's a five thousand two hundred foot stretch of road that is one segment in Paver. So when you do your random sampling, if you stop here and stop here, it, it's going to take all that into consideration and give you a condition index for the whole road. If we were to divide that piece of road into sections, in other words, make it go from, from Boundary Oak to White Oak and then go from White Oak to Jake's Lane or wherever the next piece is, you, you would see that that fifteen hundred foot section would have a lower pavement condition index PCI and the other section would have a higher one. We don't see that because it was rated as one segment, one paper, but when we go out and drive it, there's a, there's a distinction. So it, it's logical to me if we want to break that segment into two pieces for paving. And when I say bad, I just mean comparatively, the first fifteen hundred might have a PCI of, we'll say, sixty and the remaining twenty-seven hundred might have a PCI of seventy-nine or something. So there's, yeah.
Quantitatively, makes sense, low PCI, let's get the work done. I think there's a qualitative here of, is this a road similar to Blue Course? It gets driven a lot and it is in East College where when people are coming through that road, they're like, I'm in Ferguson and Ferguson stinks because this is the bumpiest road I've ever been on, right? There's that kind of qualitative, is this a good road that represents our township that we should get this done ASAP? Because that's, that's, you know, kind of a, something that resonates for me. As we're picking through pulling, pushing and pulling some of this stuff.
Some agencies use rideability as a factor. We don't have that in our criteria. But we're, I shouldn't interrupt you, you were headed somewhere and I stepped in, so.
No, I actually think you, you hit it, hit it on. You're like, hey, I, I got one number, rideability is not one of them.
Yeah.
So, interesting. And Lisa, you were saying like some of these pushes and pulls were like, well, this street's next to that one, why don't we do them at the same time? Yes, when you were saying some of the movements. And, well, I, I'm okay with whatever we do, I just, I definitely want to see the new number after this is all done. The numbers change, the numbers are going to change when we push and pull between the years.
Oh, and the entire thing, or the breakout of Gatesburg?
All of the numbers are going to change. So I'm okay with it, I, I don't have any
That's what we're doing today, we're suggesting the changes and we'll see this again, but yeah, yeah. Anything else on Gatesburg? And then the other thing, Patty had brought up Denton in Overlook Heights, did you want to add that?
No, I'm okay.
Okay.
It's not, I've only traveled and it'll get picked up.
Very good, okay. Anything else on?
Can we just recap for my notes? So I understand West Gatesburg, what were we doing with, with the roads before that again?
I think we left Ross Street in twenty-five. I think we left everything as it was.
Okay, so the only change so far is the West Gatesburg that we talked about?
Yeah, because Stafford, we wanted to keep.
Stafford.
Yeah, so we let, everything else is the same.
All right, thank you.
Yeah.
And then what was the discussion on Denton, the final?
Nothing.
Leave as is?
Leave as is, yeah.
All right, thank you.
Yep, so Gatesburg's the only change there.
Okay, anything else?
We will move to Stormwater. First up is Deerfield Drive and that was Omari.
Uh, I think we talked about this a little bit, but I was a little concerned that wasn't enough based on kind of some of the things you were mentioning on unknowns and such.
The funding.
Yeah.
Yeah. It is for material cost only, so there's, there's an assumption that we have the crew in-house to perform the work. And it doesn't include our equipment costs. So, so really what I did was simply drew a cross-section of a stone channel at a certain depth, came up with a tonnage of stone and I know what our tonnage cost is for stone and that, and that's what I put in. So I think I'm comfortable with the cost if the, if, when we design it, if the scope remains just a, a rock line channel. But if it turns into something more than that, then, yeah, then, then we wouldn't have necessarily the funding. Certainly if we contracted it out, the funding isn't there.
Right, oh, sure.
Yeah.
Well, let me flip this. So, so if I recall correctly, the reason why this is a problem is because we're kind of doing patchwork and it washes out and you patch it and wash it out. And the cross-section, the drawings that you've done, kind of using your knowledge and experience and expertise, you're confident that that's the right solution that won't get washed out?
Well, what I've done is just the estimate based on some assumptions and I think I'm pretty close on what a cross-section will look like. But our stormwater engineer is actually the one that's going to run the calc, so look at the drainage area
Yeah.
and then size the channel. So we'll know more
Okay.
after he does that and then we'll have a better estimate going into the operating budget
Okay.
is what we think that'll be. Right now it's really an estimate based on simply my knowledge of what is probably going to need to be done, linear footage, you know, a cross-section, tonnage of stone, do all the work in-house and all we're doing is buying materials.
And so you think that this number irrespective of the new calc's and all, it should be good?
I think we're close, yeah.
Okay, all right.
Yeah.
Good, I'm good, thank you.
Okay.
All right, then we had the stormwater monitoring equipment. And that was Omari also.
The monitoring? No, the monitoring.
This is pretty far out.
Yeah.
Page two ninety of the detail.
Point, point of clarification, was this one twenty-twenty-eight or twenty-twenty-nine? Because the numbers were
Oh, yeah.
I just wanted to confirm.
So my reason for flagging was, I think, back to this workshop concept, getting more information to potentially pull something like this in or remove it. So if we have the kind of, what's the equipment, when are we going to use it? Does it make sense to buy it in twenty-five and use it through twenty, through thirty, thirty-five?
Okay.
We don't know and so, you know, I just want to flag it, just writ large to have that, we need this discussion on what's the equipment out there that exists? And if it exists and we're going to use it, scrap this or is twenty-nine the right date for this? Right now we don't, I don't know, maybe you can speak to that.
I, I don't know either. This, this is a, one of the more unknowns in the program. So when the, when the level of service and cost of service were developed, there were, there was certainly some thought to some future modeling to be done in the future. And that number, I'd have to go look back and see what it is. It's probably something less than that. The, the thirty thousand number really, and, and the narrative for the most part, came from our previous stormwater engineer and his vision of what would be good for the township in terms of modeling and our knowledge of stormwater and then doing some ability to have some type of flood notifications. But this is not at all refined and certainly does need refining. So I, I'm really open to suggestions. It's really kind of, so that we're thinking about planning for something like this, but partnering, cost sharing, what's the right equipment? That's all up for discussion. And then, and really because of those unknowns, I, I put it in twenty-twenty-nine.
And this was the item that we had added in. And this was the item that we had added in to hopefully kind of decrease expenses and, and get a little bit more efficient during CIP last year, maybe it was even the year before. We had, no, I think it was last year. We had looked at doing something, maybe it was the year before, we put it in the CIP and then just bumped it out.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not recalling.
Because we were seeing how much the other costs were increasing. So kind of bumped this part out more. Yeah, it must've been two years ago.
Yeah. There, there are certainly unknowns with this one, so.
I don't have a suggestion on what to do with it, other than let's get the workshop going.
And I would say too, because there was a lot of discussion, I'll have to go back and find where that was to, for you to reference on what exactly the equipment and why it landed in there and so forth, so.
I don't necessarily, well, I guess the what is, it's really about the timing of the what. Like I, I'm not going to use the equipment, so I don't really know. Like it's really more about like what's the plan around the equipment? And as I said, there's, it's, there's lots of unknowns. And so this is, this is a swag that may, it could go away if we talk about partnering with other organizations that already have it. Or it could stay right here and we should pull it in because we're, whatever we're doing right now, we're subcontracting for it. Maybe we spend this two-hundred K next year. And, and, and just like the, the, um, the core drill, right? Could be a similar concept of we're spending X amount a year and I'd like to, we gotta flush through it.
So you want to leave it?
In my view. With no other information, yes, leaving. I'd like to get more information. How can we get more information?
And we, and we will develop it, more information.
Okay, good. And then we have, uh, the pipelining. I flagged this. And.
I provided a little more information on page five of seven. And then on page six of seven. And I, and I don't know that you need me to go through all the details, but what we looked at, the amount of pipe that we, and this is based on our, our GIS, so it's as accurate as our, as our GIS is. So there's, um, it's not a hundred percent perfect, right? But we have a good amount of corrugated metal pipe left in the system. And based on what it costs us, um, to take care of the pipe, it would, and based on the funding of about three-hundred-sixty-two thousand a year, it would take us approximately thirty-one years to complete remaining of all the corrugated metal pipe in our system.
Sounds like a minimum payment of a credit card.
So obviously, we need to know what's out there, right? And that's the cleaning and assessment. And then there's the fixing the pipe. Yeah.
So I guess knowing that, um, we have our big MS four projects next year and, um, potential additional costs on Park Hills Drainage Way. I was thinking maybe we cut down on pipelining and assessment next year, picking it back up the following year. I'm looking for the chart that had. Maybe, maybe this is it. That had the MS four for the following years. Maybe this is it. So that was my suggestion.
That's a budget thing, isn't it?
Well, we would decrease the pipelining amount here in the CIP. If we were going to. So last year, we did do a number of cuts at, in the budget discussion and, and kind of reconfiguring things.
And you reduced the, the pipelining to a hundred thousand and the video assessment and cleaning to a hundred thousand.
Yeah.
So that's what we're, that's what we have for this year.
Right. But the same concept is that there's a number that's associated with the plan and be done in thirty years. And in a given year, we can cut it or increase it to do more or less. So I, I don't care. I, quite frankly, like, if we get to the, if you want to decrease in the CIP to zero and we get the budget and we request it to be two-hundred K, it doesn't matter. It's, it's, I'm, I'm okay with either. Because the budget's when it counts.
Yeah, I mean, this is the planning tool for them. So I would rather give, give direction at this time and so that we have a better idea. Just, you know, looking at what the, um, you know, anticipated revenue for the fee is and kind of the goal toward the end of last year was to try to keep expenses at the fee level so then we wouldn't have to transfer so much in, um.
The park, if it helps, the Park Hills Drainage Project expenses carried over to next year would be rebudgeted or carried over funds from this year. So it's fully funded for this year. So whatever has to be carried over would be carried over because it's a, it's obligated, so to speak. Is that's my understanding of how to handle that.
Yeah, that does help. No, that does help because I think it's, um, oh, here's what I was looking for. This is in the transmittal letter, because we've got, uh, Stormwater total for this year then would be one-point-six million and then, or sorry, this year, twenty-twenty-five and then twenty-six is six-hundred-and-five thousand.
Sorry Dave, I don't understand, I don't understand what Dave was talking about. The whole fully funded this year and carryover, what, what does that mean?
So what I was referring to is, um, when you see the expenses next year, I had, I, in the CIP, put four-hundred-and-fifty thousand to finish the Park Hills Drainage Project. But that's not, that's not new money. That, that's actually fully funded and budgeted this year. So if we, it's four-hundred-and-fifty thousand that we wouldn't spend this year, that we would move to next year.
Because that project won't start in twenty-four, it'll start in twenty-five.
The, the, the Park Hills Drainage Project is currently under construction and we, we awarded the contract and it's, it's fully funded in the budget. But my projection is that we won't get all the plantings and landscaping and everything done this year. So we'll have to kind of carry that money over to next year.
I understand.
Sometimes we call it rebudgeting, but when you look at the expenses that Todd's projected for next year, what I'm trying to say is four-hundred-and-fifty thousand of that is because we're finishing up Park Hills Drainage and we're gonna, we're gonna use the money that we already have in our budget now for it.
Twenty-four dollars will be used in twenty-five.
Yeah, so another way to do it is I, I could have not put Park Hills Drainage in here at all and just showed you what next year's plan would look like. And then during budget time, we would say, hey, by the way, we didn't get this project down. We need to carry this money over. But I just put it in.
Thank you.
Yes.
So for twenty-twenty-four, we did video assessment and pipelining at a hundred thousand each. And we had carried over a bunch of.
We did.
Stuff, right, from the previous year. So we were already doing a lot.
For work that wasn't, that was awarded but wasn't completed.
In twenty-three.
And we brought that over into, into this year and finished it up.
So will all that get completed this year then? Or do you think anything will carry over?
So this, this year with the funds that are allotted, I'm expecting we're going to get the contracts out to bid and all that work done and not deal with having to ask to carry over any money.
Okay. So I get, you know, I'll, I'll throw out a suggestion and that would be to do what we did last year for twenty-twenty-five and that was a hundred each year. Knowing that doesn't keep us on pace for that program, but it does help balance the year over year of the fund. So it's just a thought.
I'm good with that, knowing that these larger projects are going to be coming to an end, reducing that down to a hundred thousand.
And the, the fund looks, you know, if you look at the budget and the spreadsheet, it looks like there could, with the fee being where it's at, it looks like there could be potential to maybe ramp up that relining in the following years if the MS four isn't the burden that it is in twenty-five. So I'd, I'd, you know, what are your thoughts on that, Dave?
I understand it, yes.
Yeah, do you think, because what we were talking about yesterday was maybe the burden will be reduced for the MS four.
Yeah, and we're talking about this Park Hills bubble working its way through the funding. I, I had a discussion with, with our Stormwater engineer this morning and he was meeting with the MS four group and we, and I talked about all the things we talked about last night. And so, so certainly there's going to be an emphasis on not trying to do large, I'm sorry, expensive stream bank restoration projects, looking for other innovative ways to do it. I believe we have a neighboring municipality that was, was able to cost effectively retrofit a Stormwater basin. So some of the older basins that are rate control only, sizing them, running calculations, redoing the outlet structure so that it infiltrates. And in DEP's mind, when you're infiltrating, you're also, any of the sediment is also in, you know, being filtered out. So that's a very cost-effective way to do it. We don't own as many Stormwater basins, but we'll look at those. If it makes sense to partner or do something like that, we can look at that. We're not certain how DEP's going to look at using the sediment removal from, from pipe cleaning yet, but we're certainly looking into that. He also talked about areas where if we, if we're in the drain, certain drainage area and we have scour at the end of our pipes and we repair that scour, we can take credit for the amount of soil that would have scoured had we not protected it. So there's, there's certainly things we're looking at to try to reduce costs in the future. So I'm, I don't, I, I don't know what the permit's going to look like.
Right.
Nobody knows because it's not being released. But as many knowledgeable people that I can talk to about it are giving me this information. So that's the way I'm trying to prepare the CIP.
Yeah, thank you for that.
Yeah.
Thoughts?
I'm good with the proposal as presented.
I agree.
As soon as I saw three, I wrote my notes, but.
No objection.
Okay. I think I knew, you know, and again, we're, you know, I acknowledge it doesn't keep us on any, that pace with that, but it, it hopefully will help with a, a smoothing effect on, you know, the use of the fee and.
Yeah. I do have a thought though, longer term, a note for your successor.
Right, yeah, thirty years.
Thirty-one years out, all of our successors, and that is, some of this stuff's going to fail by the time we go to even reline it or it's going to be. So we should probably put somewhere in our plan, like there's some replacements that we're going to have to do. Or at least some stuff is going to be so bad because we didn't get to it yet that we should start putting some replacements throughout, you know, over a few years.
Right, and we saw that like the, um, King's Court, you know, like there were some things that come up in, like that have to get done, you know, so. Yeah.
I'm sorry.
No, I was just going to say, so I trust that you would prioritize, you know, things that need to be.
When we did the video assessment, that corrugated metal pipe is too far gone to line.
Oh, that was a replacement, that's right.
So we, we knew we had to replace it and the question is, are we going to contract it out or do it in-house? And it's, it's, it's maybe a small contract, but big for us to do in-house, but we're doing it. So we're gearing up to do that starting the week of July eighth. But that one, yeah, we do have to rebuild all the old pipe, lay the new pipes, replace, um, curving, whatever concrete, patch the pavement. Yeah, so we'll, we'll be tackling that one. But those are the things that, you know, as we do our video assessment, we uncover and hopefully we don't uncover, you know, lots and lots of them.
Those, right, yeah.
So is there a way to increase the video? It just seems like that's the bang for the buck is videoing and waiting twenty-five years to video this stuff. Doesn't sound like, you know, doesn't, it.
I'm only laughing because we had this when.
Deja vu.
It's deja vu. Because we thought, why don't we just video everything and get an assessment? But, but then when you go back into line, and I'll let Dave really answer this, but when you go back into line, the condition is different than it was five years ago when you videoed.
Yeah, so we, if, if we had to prioritize one over the other, certainly video assessment is the priority because we have to know what we have. When we get too far out ahead of our pipelining, you know, if it's five years or so, we're coming back to, to video it to make sure that it is still in a condition that, that we can line it and we clean it. But, um, I think with what we have to work with, with a hundred thousand, a hundred thousand, um, that we're doing this year, at least that's keeping us, that's keeping us moving forward. And we're setting aside some funding to take care of the really bad stuff that we uncover. If we could increase one of those, I would ask that it be the video assessment so we can start to get ahead of, um, the pipelining and know what the condition of our pipes are. Yeah.
Yeah, and I, there's no way to go too much faster unless we're willing to spend half million dollars a year to get this done in ten years versus twenty-five. But I, I think the appetite for that is low. So then Lisa, what about two-hundred K for video? Because it's well worth it. We're going to video more, know about more items that are okay versus a problem. So then a year out, maybe we go down to fifty K or zero for lining in twenty-five. Don't worry about it for, for a year, let's just video more. And, and then twenty-six, as you, as you are saying, let's finish this other project and then come back and do, and we'll have a lot more knowledge of lining for twenty-six. Just a thought.
That's what I was thinking when he was saying, that putting two-hundred into just videoing and not lining anything next year and just taking it a year as video assessment, what would be your thoughts on that?
So, so if we do that and we find things are very, very far gone, probably we will just determine which ones are critical and we'll open cut them, you know, and repair them so we don't have failures. So that's a feasible path.
So if we did, if we're trying to keep it, you know, we can change these numbers. We're just ballparking here. If you did, uh, would you need money in, um, you would need something in the lining budget then?
If, if we didn't have anything on lining, we probably want to make sure that we have at least in operating enough in materials that we can, you know, buy pipe and make, make critical repairs is what I would say, but.
And I'm not going to try to go back and do the math of that, but if we did one-fifty and fifty, does that make sense?
I, I believe so. I got a, I got a, um, I, I believe fifty thousand is still enough to get interest for, for that work. If we drop too low, you know, our unit prices might be climbing, but I, I think fifty thousand, yes. If we did a hundred thousand fifty.
For, you know, critical repairs as needed as you discover them. So that would, because we have one-forty-two in here for the video assessment. So that's, you know, kind of roughly the same. And then the lining would go from three-sixty-two to fifty. And then, like I said, the following year, we've got as a total six-hundred-and-five thousand. So, you know, there's potential there too, based on, uh, the balance in the Stormwater Fund and. based on the balance in the stormwater fund and where we're at with everything else, increase that the following year. Okay. So when, does that make sense to you?
One forty-two for video as is and lining goes down to fifty.
Yeah, or if you want round numbers, you could do one fifty for video.
One fifty video.
Mm-hmm. Does that?
Fifty for lining.
Not competing. So lining is lining, not critical repairs. There's not, there wasn't, was there a line item? Was there a page in here for critical repairs?
So.
Like, this is a new, I'm assuming this is like a new concept here.
Terminology. So, 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 so lining, the, so we were using a NASCAR rating, one, two, three, four, five, right? With, with five being, being the worst. If we, so I would call that a critical repair, right? But if, but if there are conditions that it can't be lined because there's large protrusions or punctures or deformations or the, most of the bottom's completely gone, so we try to line it, it doesn't have the structure and it'll deform, then we have to dig it up.
From the lining budget?
If, if we had fifty thousand for pipe lining or repairs, we, we would use that for whichever we need.
Okay, so lining or repairs is, lining is lining or repairs. Okay.
Because typically you're going in and doing the video assessment and then doing what you need to do. So, but you're making me rethink that proposal. So if we keep the video at two hundred and say, leave fifty in lining for critical repairs as, as discovered? Because that's the intent there. And then you're still getting.
It is, I mean, I, I think the, it's fifty thousand dollars for lining and repairs, with repairs being first priority, but if they don't find anything, then they're going to use it on line, maybe. Right?
So for pipes that are a one and a two, we don't do anything. If it's a three, we use our engineering judgment. If it's a four or a five, we'll, and we have the funds, we'll want to line it. But if we find.
And if it's got a hole, you fit, you dig it out.
We have to dig it up and fix it.
That's a six.
But if we have so much four and five, right, that fifty thousand doesn't do it, now we have to look at the video and subjectively get in there and say, okay, which is the worst of the worst, so to speak?
Okay.
Right? So we, we'll, if we have more fours and fives, we just, we have to manage that.
I guess I have a clarifying question. We've been kind of melded and brought together these two ideas. The stormwater pipe lining program at three hundred and sixty-two thousand and the video assessments at a hundred and forty-two thousand, which approximately, we'll say is five hundred thousand. My goal is to get those numbers down from five hundred thousand. So where, where are we settling then? If we look at five hundred thousand dollars, where are we ending up in this conversation?
Where does five hundred come from?
The three sixty-two for the stormwater pipe lining program and the one forty-two for the video assessments, just in twenty twenty-five.
And so, given that with those two numbers, we're looking at thirty years to get all of our pipes, see if the corrugated metal pipe just to some sort of decent, not going to fail state.
Right.
Why do we think five hundred, less than five hundred thousand dollars is even an option?
Well, thirty is already such a, we'll say, we're already missing the market thirty years. So why not miss the market a little bit more and only really focus on the, you know, when we have critical issues? And I would imagine too, the video assessments, those are done, I'm sure, through a process and evaluation. There are certain ones that need to be reviewed at a certain frequency or et cetera that might be more critical than others. So I rely on that process to then identify the ones that are critical and then we need some urgent repairs. I just.
Yeah. So, and that's, that's the idea is, you know, hopefully in these following years after these big projects that we have in twenty twenty-five that we can maybe, you know, catch up a little bit, you know, you know, kind of.
We just talked about putting a little three eighths inch, a little taller on top of our roads. Spending hundreds of thousands of dollars on that. And yet, like a similar infrastructure kind of preservation, we're like, no, we got to bring that down.
Yeah, I'll say for me, I'm looking at the, the fee too. So I'm looking, you know, this is all coming out of Fund Twenty. And so to kind of think about how that, how that works, that's just personally, that's how I'm kind of looking at it too, so.
Got to, got to, got to look at the, 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 the big picture here. The funding's not necessarily increasing, so how are we going to pay for what we put down? And I can, I can tell you with the stormwater fee, like, that is one way to ruin a picnic. Just go in and start talking about a stormwater fee and people just get cranky. You know.
We need a workshop.
I, yes, I, I agree, but that, that, that is for a different day, but, and, and we will get there.
So what are your thoughts? We'll go to this side of the table too, for doing like a, where do we land? One fifty and fifty?
I can go with one fifty and fifty.
I can go with it, that's fine.
That's one fifty for videoing.
I'm good with one fifty and fifty. I will say again, these things are so expensive for just a little bit of stuff that we can actually do. I mean, repaving a road is that example is, or micro-surfacing, that is a tangible, I see that. This is one of those things where there's a lot of money spent, it's underground, which is all right, I mean, we have to spend money in there. But we're already getting so little with that money.
Do you want to hold off on everything or what do you, what are you thinking?
No, I'm good with the, the one fifteen fifty. Yeah. That to me takes the five hundred thousand down to something that's a little more tenable.
Mm-hmm.
For, while these big projects get pushed.
Well, that's, I mean, that's, you know, when you look at the spreadsheet, you can clearly see, you know, where, that this just kind of smooths it for, for that year.
I think that was Matt's way of saying we need a workshop.
Yeah.
We need a workshop.
And, and if I'm correct, at this point, we're spending more than that fee's really bringing in.
Well, that's the, I, go ahead.
With the Park Hills Drain Project and the, and the upfront on some of these P R P string restorations, yes. And I, I think if you go back and look at the cost of service model, you, you'll even see that at the beginning, there were higher expenses. Now, Park Hills has cost more than, than that showed, so it's even more expensive, right? But it's, it's coming and going and then the bubble that I've been talking about is hopefully going to pass.
Mm-hmm.
And, you know, one comment I'll make is just, you know, we, 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 we're not a water authority or a sewer authority or a gas company, but think about the infrastructure that they have under the ground that you can't see, and that's just, that's what they, that's what they have to manage. We're, we're fortunate in that we have a lot of assets that we can see that we can take pride in, right? The trees, you know, our, our roads, our sidewalks, everything that we can visualize. But we do have that underground buried asset to maintain.
Right.
Which, and, and I know you're hard at work trying to figure out how to balance the funding for that.
Yeah.
And I appreciate that.
Right. I, I definitely support maintaining that stormwater infrastructure, but again, it's that asset that's not seen, so, you know, it's trying to balance that funding, but also convince that we, we got to take care of it sooner than later.
Okay, so I think we've got a consensus here on one fifty for video, fifty for lining, if you see something that needs to get fixed ASAP. Okay.
For all the years?
I think we can.
For twenty twenty-five.
I'm sorry, yes, twenty twenty, twenty twenty-five, yeah.
Sorry, that was a joke.
Okay, we'll move to traffic signals and signs. And we have the audible pedestrian signs at Bristol, and this was Patty.
Yes, I was just curious, was that a request or was that just a, a thinking I had?
I believe a request, yes.
Interesting.
We have someone that, I believe, travels Blue Course, yeah, this is Blue Course and Bristol and Blue Course. Yeah, no, that's it, Blue Course and Bristol, yeah. Yeah, we, we've been working on Bristol and West College. And there's some other signals, but, but that was, that was a request, yeah.
Okay.
Okay. No, it just struck me as odd because generally, if, if the person is blind, understood. If the person is lack of vision, you're only looking across two lanes of traffic. It's not like looking across a lot with a lot of noise, you know, so it just, anyway, I was just curious.
I don't think I wrote that in narrative, but, but that's my memory.
Okay.
From discussion, discussing it with, with the township engineer, that new signals will incorporate the APS. But in terms of going back and retrofitting, they're, they're being driven by requests.
Okay. That's fine. Okay, so leaving that. And then we'll go to highway construction, and the first item was the forty-five, twenty-six Nixon Road intersection improvement, and that was Omari. And Matt being too, I'm not sure.
I remember saying something about it, but I didn't write it down in my.
I can introduce the topic if you'd like.
I'm happy to hop in kind of with, with the, I'm sorry, I'm still scrolling through, the nine hundred and twenty thousand, right?
Yep.
Yeah. So, again, I'm wondering, and I think this seems to be a common theme, as to what we can do to break out and look at the, not the low hanging fruit, but the most valuable bang for our buck that's going to keep our folks safe. And when I say that, I'm thinking specifically of the pedestrians in Pine Grove Mills that have to go ahead and traverse that intersection. I see families, sometimes with, I saw a family with a dog trying to get to the gas station, you know, across the intersection. And it was a sprint and then here came a, a car around the corner and you went, ooh, okay, hopefully that car, yes, is slowed, but it was going too fast when it entered there. I, I wonder of the nine hundred and twenty thousand dollars, because that's a huge tag, what we can do to spread out some of this? Focusing on improving the mobility for pedestrians in the space that we have now, knowing that the road will hopefully change. Again, I'm getting more comments about pedestrians than I am hearing, boy, it's inconvenient that I have to make a right from Nixon on to twenty-six, forty-five. So it's the pedestrians that I'm most concerned about. Do we light it up like a Christmas tree? And, you know, is that what the RFP says? And what are our options? So again, it's kind of chunking this out, maybe making it a little more palatable over time, that nine hundred and twenty thousand dollars. But again, focusing on the pedestrians right out of the gate. That's a lot, and maybe it's not for tonight's conversation.
Yeah.
Did you have something on this one?
Yes. No, no, I, I think Matt brought this up that, and I just said, yes, I agree.
Yeah. Okay, did you want to suggest something to change in here?
I don't, do we, yeah.
Do you have any thoughts on that?
Yeah, I have some thoughts. So the, the impetus for this was the Pine Grove Mills Mobility Study. And we had a consultant do a study, present a number of different options to the public, to the board. And the one that was chosen as the preferred option was the one that included geometric improvements. So there's physical changes to the curb lines. And it also shortened the pedestrian path, it removed the flashing light. And that was evaluated against some other options, like two different types of roundabouts that were suggested. It doesn't do anything with, you know, truck traffic or anything like that. And so the, 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 in this year's budget was funding to do the engineering for this project, assuming that we were going to build it as laid out in the mobility study, feasibility study. And that was a nine hundred and twenty thousand dollar construction tag. So if we're kind of rethinking what, you know, what we want to do, we, we should probably hold off on the RFP award until we restructure it to say, we want to look at this in phases. And what, if we're mostly focused on the pedestrian safety, do we want to look at some cost, low-cost pedestrian improvement that doesn't necessarily do everything that we saw presented to us in the mobility study? And the, the actual cost will get refined, you know, during the engineering study. So it's kind of, we'd be reeling back what we put out there on the street, but we haven't, we haven't awarded it yet, right? So, so we can change directions.
And I guess another question too is, the potential grant funding or anything for the work here? We, you know, we look at one point two million dollars for a Pine Grove Mills plan, we're like, oh, don't worry, six hundred thousand approximately is coming from grants. Great. Anything with grants or something with this?
There, there may be. We, we haven't submitted anything in that regard yet, but that could be something we could look into.
Is this a green light go eligible? We talked about the, the lights associated with that project.
I don't know if it would be green light go. It, it might be more like TASSA, which is, used to be transportation enhancement projects, which, which really are geared more toward mobility, bike and ped. It is an intersection safety improvement though, so I would have to look into what kind of funding would be. Grant funding might be available.
So wasn't there something on the Northland Mobility Study that was also in the, you're thinking about a rectangular flashing?
Yeah, that's an R R F B, rectangular rapid flashing beacon.
Something like that be desirable for Pine Grove Mills.
I'm, I'm thinking with this conversation, that I like, I mean, the plan of nine hundred and twenty thousand, great. But as kind of a next step, do we want to just allocate planning money for twenty twenty-five? For what some options are, looking at grants, looking at rotating beacon, whatever we call these things, to, to increase pedestrian safety. But my question is the feasibility of this. Is it possible to get anything designed, implemented and constructed in a year if there is a, hey, you know, something? We do hear a quick, couple of things that we can do to light the place up like a Christmas tree and make folks a little safer in crossing. Is it even feasible?
If we're talking the project that's in the mobility study, we wouldn't do design and utility and construction. I don't think we have any right away. We wouldn't do all that in, in one year. We had design in this year and then construction in a future year. I don't know if it's next year or the following year. In what?
Twenty-six.
Twenty-six. So we were, we were doing design, start design this year. Given the time of the year, it'll probably bleed over into next year, and then construction in twenty twenty-six. But if we wanted to kind of rethink what that project looks like, we probably want to do that before we award the current RFP.
And I'm sorry, maybe I'm not seeing that breakout of the design for.
The design's in this year, twenty twenty-four.
It's a hundred and sixty?
That sounds right.
I'm sorry, in the, in the write-up.
Oh, in the write-up, okay, I'm sorry.
It's, it's, it's in this year's operating budget in twenty twenty-four.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
Yes.
I'd like to get some, some other thoughts on this too. I'm just, you know, this is me talking as somebody who does hear about this intersection.
Well, you move over there, so I, I defer to you on kind of what the folks there want. But I will, I will, what, where I'll, I'll opine here is similar to, somebody builds a building, you know, they've got a plan to build ten stories, so they, they put the pylons, you know, to get or, you know, whatever that height is. They realize they don't have the dollars to build it all the way, so they build the first five. It's, it's rated to go ten, but they, they put. It's, it's rated to go ten, but they, they put the first five on there. And, you know, if, if something happens later where it's, okay, the economics have changed, they can build the other five. Now, it's not cheap. It's not, but it is something less than what was originally planned. And so that's where my brain is going when I thought about Matt's idea of, all right, well, is there an opportunity to put the utility in there associated with that full project? Is there opportunity to put, you know, this, you know, the, are there three things that you can do to prepare for the big thing in one year? And then push the other things out two more years and then do the full, the whole?
Yeah, I, I probably have to refresh myself a little more with the project. But what I remember is we're doing some geometric work and changing curb lines. And it's not until you do all that, that you pull it in and make that shorter pedestrian crossing. So to do something short of all that, I'd have to probably get with the township engineer and think about what something like that might look like.
I'm also okay with everybody else's with saying nine hundred and twenty thousand dollars sounds good and let's leave it in. I'm, again, I'm just, if we're good with the number, I'm great with this. I'm just trying to think of what, you know, make it a little more palatable.
Because we can see this. Got it.
I know what you did there, I saw it.
So we have the hundreds, I want to say a hundred and sixty thousand for the design proposal, for the engineering. Yeah, okay, for this year, and that still has to go out, so.
Yeah, that, yeah, I'm sorry, we did put it out. They sent them to us. We have yet to evaluate an award.
Got it, okay, thank you. Okay, it was a hundred and sixty, okay. So that was that year. And then the nine hundred and twenty thousand is in for twenty twenty-six. I'm comfortable leaving this here because this gives us all next year to work with CCMPO, who just hired a new grant writer to, you know, try to get all the participating municipalities in the county some more grant money. And this, I would think, goes right into some of this stuff. And if we don't get a grant, then we, you know, keep looking at how we can, how we can do something else. You know, I think, but I think now is, if we're going to get money, I think now is the time, from what I'm hearing from CCMPO. And they're about to come back and ask us for money for another grant specialist position. So I think, yes, if we can, you know, see some, some benefit of that, I think this is where, this and then the Northland Study, I think.
Yeah.
That's just my opinion. I think leaving it and then.
The residents would appreciate something being done in this intersection. And this is the, the whole kit and caboodle. And I think it's, it's fine with, with leaving that in. I'm, I'm good with this.
If it was for next year, I'd be concerned. But this does give us a number of grant cycles next year to apply for something. And it's ready, you know, it's going to be ready to go, so.
Yeah, it's far down. I'm, I'm good with that, yeah.
Okay.
Thank you.
But I see all this, I mean, it's, it's tough because it is, you know, the way the design is. That's what Dave was saying, you know, you're bringing in the sidewalk to make the actual crossing area shorter. And so it's all kind of these different pieces. But, yeah, I guess if there is some phasing element, maybe, yeah.
Great, thank you.
Okay, so that was that, so we are leaving that one.
Well, to tonight.
And then I have the Teaberry Lane sidewalk construction. And that is on page sixty-two. That is for twenty twenty-five and twenty twenty-six. That was Jeremy.
I thought it was somebody else, but.
Maybe me too.
I'm, I'm, I'm good with this moving forward because that is a missing sidewalk connection. To be honest with you, in the few years I've lived there, like Teaberry Lane is almost like a whole different pedestrian route in itself. It's just almost sometimes a constant, especially like that rush hour, going to work, coming home from work, just a constant flow through of people walking, biking. I actually know one resident that roller blades Teaberry Lane to work. And we do have two, 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 three, like apartment complexes, townhouses, houses within that area. Good walkable connection to stores that people do take advantage of. We, we also now have a bus stop right at the end of the lane, thanks Patty. So it does. So I think there is a lot of value in that sidewalk connection.
So you're not proposing any change?
No change.
Anybody else want to change anything there? Okay, I'm good with that. Okay, next up, we have the Comprehensive Townshipwide Traffic Study to push out to a later year. That might be on page forty. Yes, it is, and that is.
Two sixty-nine.
Yes, okay, you're, you're at two sixty-nine, and that was on there for twenty twenty-six. So your suggestion was to push it out to a later year?
Yes, I feel, again, with the individuals, projects and things that we've already identified or that continually are identified by, you know, others. I don't want to say this is moot, but maybe this is, again, it, I think, could do. It really sums it up and pushing that out another year or two is fine. Just my thoughts.
I'd agree with that, and I think we'll have the Active Transportation Plan completed and from the county, and maybe, you know, that might inform some of this too. So you want to make a proposal?
Will it inform it, Mr. Roger?
Excuse me?
This is, the comment was.
The Active Transportation Plan?
May inform Ferguson in some way, shape or form. I'm asking, would it?
I'm not as familiar with the Active Transportation Plan, so. I'm probably more familiar with, with what the Townshipwide Study does.
I'd say twenty twenty-eight.
Sounds a good year to me.
I'll pull it back in next year.
There you go.
I'm fine with it.
Twenty twenty-eight, okay.
Roger, are you good with that? Is there any reason why?
I'm, I'm okay with that, yeah.
You probably want a workshop, don't you?
Okay, we want to move to.
Everything takes a workshop.
Police Budget, Vehicle Seven, that was Patty.
I just had a question, is that just unique to us? The State College Borough have one and Patton Township has one?
No, no, we, what we have, that's something that Ferguson, I believe, took on as a donation. I don't even know what ambulance company gave it to us. I, I can't speak, it was nineteen ninety-five, at least. I don't know when it was even given to us, but it is a nineteen ninety-five vehicle. No, this would be unique to Ferguson Township.
And then, but it would be beneficial if needed in?
Oh, absolutely, absolutely.
Enough said, that's all I just was curious about it.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Would that be like some of the FedEx vans?
That would be correct, yes. You could refer to it as a bread truck, yes. I think this would be bigger. I, almost like a bread delivery truck when I was growing up. But it's, yeah, it would be like this, a FedEx type.
It's true.
Right, it's true.
You're right, right.
Oh, we might need to bring donuts.
Where do we get credit for stuff like that? Maybe we already do, I mean, I feel like, and this is a different discussion, we are paying the most into cog, but we do things like this. And is there credit there? Like, hey, guys, we do A, B, C, D, E, F, why are we still paying thirty percent of the cog budget?
That's another workshop for another day.
Let's workshop later.
And again, this is a twenty twenty-eight item, so it's.
It does sound like it could be maybe like a regional asset. Take it down to progress days, maybe you may even near at football games.
Well, the regional asset we do have is the current command post that is quite old. But unfortunately, when you talk about crisis negotiations, the current command post between the nine-one-one center and the first, front part, command staff and the back part, making decisions and getting information from the tactical response team, you don't even have a location for crisis negotiations. But like I said, this is a twenty twenty-eight item that can be discussed further over the next couple of years. But at least there's a placeholder.
Mm-hmm, you're right. Okay, we're good, we're leaving that there. All right, next up, we had parks, and I flagged the Haymarket. Restrooms, which are in for twenty twenty-five at four hundred and fifty thousand dollars. You know, yeah, I would suggest that we put on the, the Parks Committee work plan to explore alternatives, such as collaborating with the Little League folks and seeing how to work together using their facility, if it's even a possibility. But, so I would at least suggest this was in for, whoops, where am I? So I, I'd propose removing it, but I would be okay moving it out if we want to keep it, again, as a placeholder in case those discussions.
I would support removing it.
Okay.
What was that again?
I'd support removing it.
Remove. How about we remove it, move it out this year, for now? Remove it after this is a real plan. They may come back and say, no, we got to do this, for whatever reason.
All right, I'll make the, I'll make the proposal to move it out to twenty twenty-nine. Sure, okay.
Yeah, and, yeah.
There's a porta potty out there right now.
There is.
We're paying for that?
Yeah, because that's, I think we do.
Got it.
And I think that's.
We are.
CRPR.
CRPR.
We pay CR.
Yes, is that part of our maintenance?
Dollar for dollar, or is this part of, is the parks is paying for it on behalf of?
Good question.
I think CRPR puts them in, in all of the parks in the summer.
Okay, our thirty percent, so everybody's paying for that porta potty right now. And we were thinking of spending four fifty to then give it to CRPR to then ma- manage.
I think one of the things about this item is that, at least in my few years of being part of this discussion, there was never really a consensus on what it would be in terms of what type of restroom facility it actually would be. I, I don't, I think there were like a lot of discussions of, at one point, there was this idea that there would be, there's some company that like brings a restroom in, it's prefabricated, and they drop it with a crane and they just. Good to go, like hook it up, and, and it's only going to cost a hundred thousand dollars and win, we're out. And then it was like, well, maybe that's not really feasible and there's all these other things. So there's never really, to your point.
And the idea originally was to get a restroom building in all of our parks that are within the sewer service area. So that was, you know, we were doing a, a new, or updated master plan for each of the parks. There's just a lot of park activity over these past five years or so. There's a lot of park investment and activity, and this was part of that, so. Okay, so I'm proposing to move that out to twenty twenty-nine and adding that to the work plan for the Parks Committee. I don't see any, okay, so. Sorry, do you have something on that?
No, I, I support that, I.
Here's the way you said it, I'm just.
But, but I mean, the point being though, that CRPR could do something about this tomorrow. Just that negotiation to use the, the bathroom in the building, you know, a hundred feet away. We've got to force the issue, and maybe there's a thing we could do. So you guys start talking to the facility owner there.
Right.
Then the porta potty goes away and folks.
Yeah, so something else to bring up with our authority rep, you know? And kind of go both, both angles on that and see where we can go. Okay.
I'm, I'm good with pushing that back. I, I think the other thing too is making sure we get the right kind of facility. Because I, I'm, I think even with the porta johns, the porta potties, we don't necessarily maybe have an adequate amount of porta potties within the parks. Because they do even say inside them, like, they can only accommodate so many people. But if you have a lot more people, the condition could become a little less desirable.
And if that is, that is a good point too, because that's something we can bring up with our authority rep the next time they're here. So I think, hold that thought, yes. And bring that up, because, you know, those are, you know, there's so much. So things like that can get lost before the next presentation, so. Okay, so I am making a note here about the authority rep. Speaking with CRPR to, CRPR for Little League and bathrooms. Then I have IT. And the first item is the, the group of items for the servers and the migration. And that was Matt and Omari.
Yeah, I, I think that there is a, there's another way to do this. I would ask that whoever's investigating this, we, we talked about it earlier, so I don't think we need to talk about it again. I'm, we can leave the number, but I, if I don't have, here's my promise. Well, here's what I would expect, is that there is a, there are options to doing this. I think there was some like, oh, no, we just said we're going to do this thing. I'm suggesting that there's a cloud, a just a hundred percent cloud-based option with some pros and cons versus this cloud and on-prem solution. And, you know, timelines and all that good stuff to say like, yeah, we'll just rip the band-aid off, go all cloud, use two cloud service providers, so if one's down, the other one's up, and we're fine. There's disaster recovery. Azure and OCI have a, have a direct connect to each other, so I would recommend that one.
One of the things that came up during the investigation of what this would possibly look like was that we were unable to find any other municipalities that had gone fully to the cloud. That's not to say that we couldn't be the first, but we didn't have a real model of what that looked like or a case study of this was successful. Or as a municipality that, you know, to Dave's point about being first responders and a police force and, and those types of elements in local government, to make that full-scale jump at one time was something we don't, like, we kind of were putting this plan together as, let's take a measured approach to this. Let's maybe, yes, we can reduce the, the on-prem footprint, move to the cloud to a degree, maintain an on-prem server, let's see how it goes. And then moving forward, reduce that. And eventually, I would assume that, I mean, it's becoming more and more commonplace every day, but there's just not any model or information of how that looks for a local government. That was the thought behind this.
I have a suggestion. What if we took all three of the server requests, moved them out to twenty twenty-six and focused on a comprehensive plan to evaluate and move wholly into the cloud over the next year?
Yeah, I, I mean, I think that's reasonable. I don't know, okay, let me see here, so wait.
And, and we probably can't move wholly into the cloud. But again, it's, it's creating the conversation for pushing these out and just coming up with a comprehensive plan, knowing that technologies are changing and.
I just want to make sure that there's not. I know that, I'm just reading through the descriptions. Ferg Host one, according to this description, has reached the end of its seven-year life cycle.
Right, and, and that to me means it can be evaluated. But it doesn't just, like a warranty or a card, it's, it's good for five years. It doesn't just turn off, so I, I don't know, I think.
Would you suggest backing up a year and giving us time to evaluate what that environment would look like?
Yeah, oh, absolutely. And the DR, having that, you know, off-prem somewhere else, you know, really exploring potentials to, to get us out of having to maintain and manage these types of servers here, et cetera.
Right, right. I mean, that's something, you know, we could definitely explore further, and I think that would, that would work.
And does that seem reasonable to folks?
Yeah.
If, if we go back and we investigate that, I, I work with our IT. If, if we go back and we investigate that, I, I work with our IT administrator and our master, managed service provider, Hinton and Associates, and they provide information that says, it's over, you gotta do it this year, and there's no coming back. I would, I mean, we'll be making the edits for the final draft of the CIP, and you will see that at the meeting on the 16th, and then I would, I would, you know, we can, you can discuss it again, but I'll, I'll put in whatever your recommendation, so long as that's the recommendation that makes sense from.
That was, yes, I think, I was going to say, you know, that's fine, and this is, like we had said earlier, there might be some items that we just need a little bit more information, and at that meeting, we can approve for the public hearing the document with the changes, so if we make some changes that evening to it. So, do you want to just say what your suggestion was again, so we can get that?
Sure, again, potentially pushing out to 2026 to allow for the conversations to happen on moving, or considering a move holistically to the cloud.
Okay.
Or off-prem.
Okay, and then I have computers, Matt.
Just the cost for the computers, it looked to be averaged about $2,000 per computer, and knowing that we're in an Office 365 type of scenario, these to me, these, the computers are nothing more than just input-output devices, so $2,000 seems like a really expensive computer for access to Office 365. They're recognized.
They could not. I, I think, in some cases, yes, that is the case. For a majority of them, that's probably true. In some cases, I'm thinking specifically of engineering department uses a substantially higher-powered piece of equipment, and there are circumstances where we might need, somebody might need a little more firepower, so to speak. I think there's, knowing that, we, what we do is, we typically get a quote based on the person's laptop that we're, the position's laptop that we're replacing. I think the $2,000 number, it probably takes care of most situations, and most are going to be less than that.
Okay, and I guess though, if I consider like CAD or something like that, do we need a lot of processing power to run that on a computer? Or is that even cloud-based? Are we looking at cloud or other off-prem solutions for something like CAD?
Yeah, that's a great part of the larger strategy for IT-based things. So for CAD, I don't believe that's, I don't believe. They're local, CAD is local. That's on-prem. The, there's a lot of components here for IT that I think we're kind of playing, we have a little bit of technical debt, so to speak, playing catch-up. Playing catch-up.
I got you.
In some ways, we've made big jumps, in other ways, we have to catch up. So I guess what I'm saying is, we got, you know, Todd started for 2025, or for 2024, he's kind of putting together the strat, the larger, the big picture strategy of what we're going to be doing moving forward. You will see some of those costs where we can make those jumps, like for instance, where we did with Springbrook for finance, where we moved to a cloud-based version of Springbrook, that was a big project that was in the budget before. You will see some of those jumps come into the operating budget. As far as what we need to continue to operate today, some of those things are still local, and we'll continue to make progress moving forward, but the urgency for this specific item is that we have a number of laptops that, as I understand it, are operating on Windows 10. And to make the jump to Windows 11, they don't have the proper, I don't know if it's a processor or a chip, I'm not really sure on that, to operate Windows 11, and so what we're trying to do is get out of those, get out of the ones that can only operate Windows 10 and replace those, so we can make the jump as quickly as possible.
And if I may, if we're talking specifically about those, those tells me, tells, that tells me that these are not the high-power computing computers that we were talking about, that might really need CAD and everything else. So I would almost be a fan of taking the $28,000 for this year, reducing that down to 14,000 to cover the 14 computers. Because should be able to at both cost and pricing and everything, again, these are just input-output devices, and for somebody who's like, ah, and use it because Windows is about to.
Yeah, and I'm, without having the, I don't have the list in front of me, but assuming that all 14 of those are, you know, just the input-output, I think there's probably alternatives, you're right, there's probably ways we can figure out how to do this and, and get the costs down.
Because this is the advantage of right, moving to the cloud and everything like that, you don't need the powerful stuff here.
Right, that's true.
That would be my proposal.
So I appreciate the proposal, I think $14,000 is a very small number that we're playing with here. I, I, and I don't know, but I suspect that there might be a machine, like, there's not 14 machines that can't go to Windows 11, there's probably, I'd like to see the detail list in order to just understand, like, what are we talking about here? Like, we're talking in generalities, and so, actually, I kind of don't want to see the details. But it's an average of $2,000 per laptop. I, I think you should probably, I would, I would just say, I think we should keep it as is. When we come budget time, and again, we're looking for $5,000 to cut, we're going to say, $5,000 is coming out of computers, figure it out, right? And so then, you know, it's kind of like, for me, it's got to come down to budget, so, you know, there's some latitude to say, all right, it's 28 from a planning perspective, but maybe the direction is, prepare to have Matt cut it when we're looking for $15,000.
Yeah, that makes sense.
If I may though, I think we need a workshop. Now we get that, I think that's good.
I agree.
Yeah, I agree with that.
You know, just.
For this year, they're $1,200.
$1,200.
$1,200, okay, see, that.
So this is kind of like, you know, let's see the desk so we can breathe, right?
Yeah.
If I'm able to say that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Not a, but they certainly won't say, oh, we have $2,000, so we'll buy. Because I'll have a, I question everything, so.
Yeah, and, and, just so that the board is aware of this, you, you may have noticed those increased operating costs, like the subscriptions for Microsoft 365, and that come up in most recent budget. And that was really, you know, to your point, Matt, I, a couple of years ago, we weren't in that position to be able to do that because we were still paying for the, you know, by perpetual license for the, for the device, and it really kind of hamstrung that, that program of replacement and giving that flexibility in terms of what, what people can, what we can do in terms of getting devices and having a true replacement program. So now we're able to really, we are able to do those things, and we'll get to some of that.
Perfect, no, and that's wonderful, so I, I appreciate this conversation, so, thank you, leaving it as is.
All right, I had one thing for IT, and I don't know if this was in the, this is for the meeting room upgrades, adding the, the hearing assistive technology that the general forum uses.
Yes, there was a discussion that I had with the consultant regarding what that would look like. Ballpark, what he said was that would cost a few thousand dollars. Depending on what system you go with and the level of, you know, technical detail that you get into, a few thousand dollars. So it would be, if that was something that you wanted to pursue, I would suggest maybe adding $5,000 to that item, and we'll, we can work with that, or less, whatever the board would be comfortable with, but that's kind of like the ballpark of where that would land.
I'll propose that, propose adding that and see, first see where the board's at with that.
So a few thousand.
I'd say I'd wait to request it.
Maybe I'm just not familiar with the, what this is, what, you know, that individual type, what does it look like, or how does it work? I, I guess I'm, just don't have enough information.
It's, you can probably explain it better than I can, but it's individual assistive hearing.
Yeah, so you might be familiar with like, the audio loop is like the more dated technology. In this case, what it is, is it takes a wireless signal of our meeting, and, or audio signal, and it transmits it via an app, a person would download an app on a smartphone device and be able to stream the meeting live on their.
And that's where I'm going with, and that's what I kind of anticipated, I just remember, let me say it this way. I can recall other meeting scenarios in other, not municipalities, but in things at university, et cetera, where if folks were having issues, there was a bank of headsets that were plugged into some, you know, Bluetooth, et cetera, and it was like, oh, if you like to hear things more clearly, help yourself to a headset, and you could do that.
Yeah.
Sounds like this, I, I like the idea of an app that's techie, however, I also like the idea of, here's a headset that, that can aid, and you just put it on and you're done.
We would have to explore like what those options were, this was just talking ballpark of like, if this was something that the township wanted to pursue, what would that look like? And that was the answer that I got, was that you're looking at a few thousand dollars. I think, you know, the, the old audio loop that would go around the room, that would have the individual connection was, it was given to me as that would cost more, but there are plenty of options out there, we could figure something out and explore it at least.
And, and for a few thousand dollars, maybe even just explore more monitors in the room. We could have one dedicated to just closed captioning, since we do now have technology through WebEx that will, not perfectly, but at least give people the context of what's going on.
Okay, so I'll propose putting it in, and I'm seeing general consensus, general, and we can cut it later at budget time if it's going to be cross-prohibitive, or if it's just not going to work. Yeah, whatever it is they use at general forum seems to be good. I thought that we did have a request, which is why I brought it up too, so.
Oh, yeah, I don't know.
But me, you know, and I, I know we're going to do the other upgrades, but.
I don't know, add it to the audio, right, the speaker.
And I don't, I would, yeah, I think that will help, so I'll, I'll make that suggestion. So $5,000, you said, hopefully it's not that. Okay, and that is the assistive hearing tech. Okay. And then we have fire protection. And so we had a couple of ideas floated out there to put, let's see, what page do you have that on?
29. This is 45.
45, okay, yeah. Okay, so currently, we've got the three different.
Station, design, acquisition.
So the two proposals I wrote down were, one was adding $100,000 in 2025 for studies or?
For something. I have ideas, one of them could be a study. We could do an RFP for a public-private partnership, where there's a private developer that has some experience with pulling together public and private entities to kind of work through that development plan for this, which would include lots of different funding sources.
If that's where we're going, I would also hope that that would include a feasibility study, because water issues and everything else, the costs associated with that would have to be known too. So maybe that comes after that, the feasibility study?
It's all part of it, yeah.
I would hope, yes.
And let me ask too, I don't know if James or if Dave, if you know, when the RFP was issued for this.
2020.
In 2020, okay, and we did not get any responses.
As far as I know, there was no further action with it.
Okay, do you, was that a feasibility, an RFP? It doesn't matter, you don't have to go look at it.
No, I have it right here, it was requested for qualifications for a professional consultant for satellite fire station needs.
Okay.
Needs assessment.
From memory.
Yeah.
The request was somewhat out of the scope of what individuals normally had their expertise in, so it may have been a little more encompassing than what somebody was comfortable doing. And so someone might want to reevaluate what the scope of the study is, if you want to do it again.
Thank you.
Going from memory.
Yeah, I couldn't remember.
Sounds like that could be used for the $100,000 to just figure out what a proposal should look like that might get more folks at the table as well.
Thoughts? I, I don't know, I just, my feeling is, is that we know what we know, and in the feasibility study, or not the, what was it? The 2017 feasibility study, is that what you get sent? That there, there is no anticipated growth out there, so we know what we know about what's out there. What we don't know are like the water issues, what's going to be happening with that. So to me, it just seems like we're doing something that'll be a report, as you said, that will sit on a shelf to tell us what we already learned in 2017. So I, I just sort of feel like, we know, if there was money, we would do this, and it would be great, but I, my feeling is, is just push it out, we know what we need to do. We're meeting national metrics, we're meeting that sort of thing, we, you wanted more qualitative information, and I would work really through COG, and rather than take it on on our own, but that's just me. But I will go along with what everybody else feels.
Yeah, I do think we would need to maybe push that construction out instead of having everything clumped in like we did. Kind of have a renewed interest in moving forward with this fire station based on what the fire director shared with us last night.
So you're suggesting breaking it up but keeping it toward the end?
Possibly, so the fire director should have more information this year, so that would bring us some. So that would bring us to that. Yeah, just keeping it there. I probably can go early, but I think that's to be looked at next year.
I mean, I think we'll get a lot from the strategic plan that, uh, that.
Regional strategic.
Fire chief's putting together and, and he's updating the, the, uh, study that was done on Western Ferguson. So I think we'll get a lot of information from that. So I, I mean, I'd be in favor of pulling forward the, um, let's see where we're at. Design and engineering, um, and land acquisition to 2028, and then, uh, construction to 2029 or 27, 28, either one. I'd be supportive of.
I'd be supportive of that caveat that we continue this conversation with the COG as a more regional solution and not a Ferguson-only solution. Because as we heard from the chief, and as we would hope, both with police services and fire services, that everyone supports one another when there's something big that's going on. So this is not just a Ferguson solution, this is a regional benefit and a regional solution, and that conversation needs to happen with the COG and with Chief Kaufman.
So between executive committee and public safety, and then finance bringing that forward? Yeah, I'd be, I'd be.
I'm happy, of course, in finance to bring it forward.
Those committees aren't building this building. So I think we're, I'm hearing different answers to different problem. I think.
I'm hearing a workshop.
You give it to yourself.
I'm not opposed, I mean, as you're saying, I'm like, good idea.
Well, well, speaking of workshop, even thinking Warriors Mark and, uh, Port Matilda, those fire companies, how can them and their jurisdictions be even a part of this so that, because we, we're gonna at some point, you know, be of assistance to them and.
I think that's what we asked him on for last night, that strategic plan. I think we asked him to, you know, speak with these other groups, so, so for now, where do we want to go with this? What's the, so we have everything currently in 2028. Do we want to leave that?
I'm okay with leaving it in 2028, that's just me.
Yeah, I'm.
Leaving the whole trio in 2028?
Yeah, I think it's all, I think it's all in 2028. I'm fine with that, I'm also fine with pulling, uh, land acquisition and, um.
Let me get, I'm, I don't, all right, at this point, it doesn't matter to me, like, where it is. I need to get smarter probably just on, like, how does Ferguson Township develop a building? And as we've been talking about, hey, we want a regional thing, that's, that's different than likely Ferguson Township has developed buildings anymore. And so let me just get smarter on that, but I think, but come budget time, I'm gonna maybe asking for, like, add a line for an RFP to do something different that we haven't done before. Because I think we're thinking about the dollars and kind of a traditional model, but all the things that are, words coming out of our mouths are, are more of a, let's work together with these different partnerships and do these other things. I think we're all aligned there. Um, but as we, you know, we're thinking, so I'm, I'm okay with just.
Right.
Let me think about it, I just need to think.
And for the purposes of this, we have to use the assumptions that we have of the existing model, so, because we, we have to make some decisions, you know, we can't just, so if we say, you know, the way that, that it's done right now is the municipality builds it, then we can assume that we will have some cost, and this, you know, this might not even be the full cost, it might be much, much more, and this is our share anyways, you know, and the rest is made up with grants or something else, so, um, I guess that's why I'm comfortable leaving this here too, because we'll, I'm certain we'll have a, you know, bear a great deal of the cost, so, no matter what, what else happens in other conversations, I just don't see, given, you know, the complications we've had with other building projects with COG and.
I'm good with leaving this as-is, and also planting the seed that all I've ever seen is the proposal for a new building. Cato Park's right here, has large buildings, ARL has some of them, etc., that have crazy amounts of power going to them. Could we repurpose? Could we work it out? Could we maybe find something that's already built that might be used for a fire station? I'd be curious to see maybe a, a, a different approach to the entire fire station, to the idea of building something new in this time. But leaving this as-is, bottom line.
So I think what I'm hearing is that we're leaving this as-is right now. Unless there's some other suggestion for the, for this, for this, we are leaving this as-is, so Todd knows, James knows. Okay, so that's, that's what I'm hearing, okay.
I, I think Mr. Patterson, Mr. Hall are built, building the argument for a workshop.
I'm sorry, Lisa.
Okay, so we have, um, we, okay, so the fire station. Okay, so that is staying as-is, all right. Okay, anything else?
Those are the items.
Okay, anything else from any staff, any board? Anybody? No, okay, if not, um, we'll look for a motion here to, um, it's printed in the agenda, if someone care to read it, and.
I'll move that the Board of Supervisors approve the comments and authorize staff to prepare amendments to the draft CIP for presentation of the proposed 2025-2029 CIP at the July 16th regular meeting.
Mrs. Patty, I'll second.
Okay, any other comments?
Is this one we have discussion now?
Who wants to kick it off?
We had the last three hours to have the session.
All right, okay, all those in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed, say no. Okay, thank you very much. Thanks to all the staff and Sina. Really, really appreciate.
Thank you.
All that work and, um, even getting everything together from our comments last night, so we were able to review it today. It's just so, um, so appreciated. So, and with that, I will ask for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
And I'll second, and we adjourned.